So I think we need to kind of move past this. And look at it as a, a big reminder for all of us that we can do, we can do better once we formalize the relationship. But you know, personally, I'll share that I feel like the entire year, the theme of that. Challenge relationship between planning board and design review has come up. Um, and I for one think it's time to put a bow on it. We need to get together. And air this all out and, and fix it. I think it's time because I feel like it, it wastes a lot of our time.
I agree.
Bill, you had your hand up. Do you still have a comment? All right.
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. So when we look at. Um, when we look at the two openings for um. The two open seats on the design review committee, one of them, these are both. That these are both seats that are on a, on a schedule, like they're on a roll, right? So. One of them expires this coming June in six months. And one of them expires one year later in June. So one is a six month position. And one is an eighteen month position and then the person would reapply for a full. Three year term if they're interested at, at that point. So that's the way these seats. Rotate in and out to make sure ideally that um, everyone doesn't. Leave at the same time, you know, so the experience continues on. So um, I have not, um. I have not asked Brendan if there's one of those seats he's particularly interested in, the six month seat or the eighteen month seat. Um, do you have a preference between those Brendan?
Um, no, I don't. I, I don't want to step on anyone's toes either if, if, you know, the people have been. Doing this for a while and they wanted, they could. I'm fine being an associate member. I don't, um, I don't want to take anyone's place if, if they thought like, so. Um, I'm happy with whatever, uh, so.
I am, I am open to. Um, the idea of. About, of voting on Brendan's application as in filling a seat. And looking at. Allowing anyone who wants to put their hat in the ring. And then deciding amongst the applicants where we think the best fits would be. If that is. Um, a good idea according to the planning board.
I mean, I think that seems like a good plan. That way if Hannah is applying, I don't, Hannah, I don't know if you know which one you're most interested in.
And I don't think we need to go into that.
You don't need to tell us right now, but I, I think that allows Hannah some time to think that through. And throw her hat in the ring and you know, it sounds like Brandon is willing to kind of. Collaboratively allow for this process to work so that we can all be content with the result. So that seems reasonable. Hannah, I see you're smiling, so it sounds reasonable to you.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
So why don't we go that route, assuming the rest of the planning board agrees?
I think then we could look at. All three candidates and decide. Oh, I'm sorry, Kate. I didn't realize I was over you. Go ahead.
I just wanted to ask a question to clarify. Are we nominating that Brendan? Would be voted for um, either of the open positions or an associate pending. A meeting with the plant, uh, design review committee?
I am, I am proposing yes, that well, I think partially. That yes, he would be fulfilling one of these seats. Um, either permanent or an associate. Which one to be decided when we get. Any and all applications between the associates. Uh, who want to apply. And then the planning board, will we root, review those applications? And make the decision about. Who goes into what seat unless someone has a strong preference. Or doesn't want to be considered for another seat.
Tricia, I, I, I think that's a fair, that's a fair assessment. I, I agree with you. I think. The, 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 the importance to allow everybody to apply, but, but to select also on the merits of the application and the expertise, which is what we're looking after. Um, so I'm, I'm, I'm fine with that myself. Um, eh, but uh. Knowing that these seats have been open for more than a year. I think we should um, set up some, some deadline to understand, to see. If, if it's only Hannah and Brendan that are applying, then we don't really have a problem. Uh, but, but we would like to know. So sooner rather than later, if there are others interested.
I believe Kevin Moat also may be interested in applying for, for, for one of those seats. Um, so, but he, he may have trouble. I, I see him on, but I know he is, I know he is um. Not local right now, so. Okay, so he may not be able to connect well.
So as a process, I, I, I think it's fine. I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of that.
Okay.
So it sounds like we're not necessarily approving Brandon yet. Or, or are we approving him for one of the positions? What, what, what's the motion?
I, I think that, I think we should wrap up this part of what we're doing now. I think we can, we can vote. I won't. We can vote on if we are approving him for one of the positions. We will then receive all the applications and we will decide.
Where he fits in. Okay.
Where, where all three candidates fit in.
Okay. I think that's.
Tricia, can you hear me?
Yes, Kevin, yes.
Oh, sorry, I was driving and I was having trouble unmuting myself, but just for the record, I do plan on submitting an application to one of the full. Time positions.
Okay.
Um, and I'll be doing that in the next, in the next day.
So I think this is, I think this is our way forward that um, I, I would purport that um. That there would then be three candidates on a level playing field. Um, so it doesn't matter if you're coming in new or if you are coming in. Um, with experience as an associate member that the planning board will reviewing the applicants as. As we do it for even a renewal and deciding where we think the. What we think would be the best fit for the job that the, the planning board needs, needs done, so.
It sounds like there's two full positions and potentially a couple of associate ones open. So there's, there should be plenty of space for everyone, which is thrilling.
Yes, we, we have extra room.
So I make a motion that we approve Brendan Carey for a position on design review. Final to be determined upon the uh, other applicants received, we'll say by the end of the year.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote? So, sorry, we don't have deep.
I'm, excuse me, yeah, Anna just missed the eye.
Arthur Jersey guy.
Yeah, Tricia Kendall eyes. Sorry, we don't know what to do and we don't have deeper here to start things off. So Brendan, congratulations, you will be filling a slot.
Excellent. Thank you.
We're, we're just not sure which one yet and uh, and welcome aboard.
All right, great, thank you.
All right, so again, we welcome all design review committee um, members to. Stay, we have one scenic road application we need to take care of. We've been putting it off for way too long, but then we will be talking about ten to sixty main in terms of. An environmental site context, not in terms of design, but um, kind of. What's under there? Well, is the focus of, of the, of the meeting tonight, so um. Design review committee is obviously welcome to stay, as is the public. Um, if you have uh, other things to do with your evening, we will not hold it against you. So um, all right, so next thing on our agenda is the scenic road application. Um. Peter, are you just handling this or is, oh, is someone, there's Roy?
Yeah, so myself and Roy Carrera, Ashland DPW, uh, Roy and I, uh, for the record, Peter, Matt, your partner. Um, is it okay if I go ahead, Tricia?
Yes, please.
Okay, so a couple of months ago, uh, Roy and I, uh, Roy and I worked together, we're great coworkers. Uh, and, and so we hopefully enjoy each other's company. Is that correct, Roy?
I think so. That's all. I'm pretty sure.
For the planning board members who do not know Roy Carrera, Roy, do you want to introduce yourself and uh, tell them how long you worked in the town of Ashland?
So uh, Roy Correa, I'm at the DPW Deputy Director. Um, you know, I handle pretty much uh, all the different departments for Doug Small. I've been with the town almost nineteen years in DPW. And one of the things we're dealing with right now is trees.
So with that said, Roy and I have been working on trees and along the scenic roads actually fall into responsibility with the town of Ashland. And a couple of months ago, we, we posted, uh, and so the two trees that, the, the two areas of uh, trees that we're here to talk about tonight are. Are on the, 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 the intersection of Cedar Street in Maine and then also along Franklin Road. So. Uh, this past Friday, um.
Peter, actually that's Chestnut and Maine.
Chestnut and Maine, I'm sorry.
Yes.
And so.
Peter, is that the one listed in the application as three thirty-one Chestnut?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
And nineteen Franklin?
And nineteen Franklin, that is correct. Um, and so uh, Roy uh, worked with Stumpy's Tree Service. Uh, certified arborist and they submitted a letter. Uh, after Roy and the certified arborist visited the site. And uh, they provided the following letter and I'm happy to share my screen if folks would like. Uh, just um, and I read from the top. Uh, there's to whom it may concern, I won't read the detail. But uh, the location number. Uh, one is, is, is a tree that uh, Roy had asked them to look at. Uh, and this was to be found over seventy-five percent dead. Uh, so this will mostly, this wasn't to be taken down by uh, by um. By order of the tree warder. But then these other two, we had them look at. One was nineteen Franklin Road. Uh, and both ashes are dead, now starting to drop large limbs on the roadway. And then the other um, location is the, the Chestnut Street, uh, and Main Street. And that um, obviously they're saying, they, they're saying that are dead and they're, they need to be taken down. I guess I'll share my screen with that letter.
So Peter, oh, oh, I, I just wanted to um, and let me know if you, if you wanted to continue your thought, but. I was look, I'm, I'm looking at what we're, what we're looking tonight um, compared with the actual application. Which lists more addresses and so I wanted to make sure. Like, like this letter, this letter is about two of the locations, but mentions a third that is not. On our agenda, right?
So on our agenda, I use the same public hearing notices that we used last time and. Since that point, Roy and I have gone out and visited the trees, which is known as Upper Cedar Street. And those trees to seem to be doing okay. Uh, and they kind of made it through another season. And so Roy and I decided that those trees should be. Um, almost put onto a monitoring list to kind of see how their health is, so. Uh, Roy, do you have anything to add to that?
Is that three ten and three forty-two Cedar Street?
That's correct.
Yes. So yeah.
Trees, so which trees are we trying to remove? Just number two and three on Stumpy's letter?
Yeah, what happened was I had other ones on, uh, at the same, when he came out, he had to look at some other locations also. That's why. The, all the street is on the um, on the letter too, also he just, he didn't know I needed separated. He put them all on there. Um, those are some trees that are going to need to be come down too. We're just, we're working on those right now. That's still uh, we're still looking into those.
So to go back to the agenda, there's also zero Main Street listed. So it says just, says Chestnut Street across from Rose Bay Drive, but I don't think those things are actually near each other.
Yeah, I know, I'll, if I could jump in, I'll, I'll say that I, oh, was I, over the weekend, Kate? Um, Kate and I connected and we, because we live on this side of town and much of the trees are on this side of town. So over the weekend, we connected and we attempted to find that zero main because I, and we could not. So um, I'm, I'm a little bit unsure where that tree is. And one of the things that. Um, was not clear to me is I noticed some of the trees have the notice on them, like there's a. Literally a letter that's posted on the tree, but some of them do not. So. I, you know, I, I'm have some thoughts about how we might. Um, you know, it is what it is. I think we have a certain way that we do this where. It sounds like Roy and Pete, you guys have a very good process where you go out and you, you're monitoring and you're reporting back to us. But I found the letter from Stumpy to be a little bit unclear as to kind of where these things are. And what they are and also kind of the health piece. So like if it's over fifty percent dead, I totally get it. It's a safety issue, but it's, if it's fifty percent dead. Or less than that, it sounds like it might recover, which. Is what Roy is saying. There's some trees that are going to be just fine, so they might be on the hit list first, but then we change our minds. So I found it to be kind of insightful to try to do a site visit and to realize that. It's not very clear which trees are healthy and which ones are not to the layperson's eye. And even to an expert, things may change, so.
So what's your recommendation, Anna?
My recommendation. So I put down some thoughts on paper and I can certainly read through them. One is, I think it would be really helpful. To have a dated letter in the future from Stumpy's so that we have a sense of timing, because if this is from six months ago. Versus now, it might impact how we evaluate the application. Um, the other thing is a photo of the tree would be nice so that we understand which tree we are actually. Deciding on a scenic route to remove, right? These are highly protected by, by our bylaws and by state law. So it's not very clear what we're even removing. Um, and then for me personally, I think if a tree is fifty percent damaged or less. I would like some analysis from Stumpy's or an expert, it could be Roy, um, as to the possibility of recovery. And what is the length of the safety range, if you will, if the tree is not going to recover? Because trees can, those are the kinds of things I think about before we start cutting down trees that I could not identify.
I, I think that process is exactly what has happened actually, and maybe. Maybe some of the documentation hasn't been as clear, but I just want to keep going back to this list here that, because these are the ones that are actually on. Are actually on the petition tonight. So the zero Main Street tree, is that something that is? Was that one of the ones that was removed because it wasn't a danger to the public?
I think I can clear up a couple of these things for you. Let me start with Cedar Street. The reason we pulled those out, they were in bad shape. We did have them reevaluated and they're still at the point where, okay, we're going to monitor them for the next year or two. And see if they get worse. So we decided to take those off the list. I think the zero one, originally we had listed it as zero was the one on the corner of Chestnut and Main because we didn't have an address, I believe. Don't quote me, but I believe those are the two pines up there. There's two small pines on that corner which have the papers on them.
Yeah, they look pretty good.
Yeah, the one on Rose Bay, I believe is one, I'd have to check my records. One did finally come down on its own. We wound up having to cut it. That might be the reason you don't see the one in Rose Bay anymore. I believe it was that one, it was in that area. We had a tree come down a few months ago. So it could have been that one.
And there's one remaining, two shady hollow path.
Two shady hollow path.
That was up on Upper Cedar, that's off the list now, right?
Yeah, that's off the list, that's off the list. I'm sorry, those are in the area. We're going to monitor those a little longer.
So the only ones on the, the only ones, I, I guess what I'm saying is that.
Yeah.
Some of what Anna was asking has been happening since we first saw this thing, which was a while ago. I think Peter did have some pictures at that time.
Yes.
But Roy has been monitoring them, saying, nope, this one's a danger, I need to down right away, or nope, we can save this one. And so I think we're down to the two that were mentioned in the letter.
Yeah, so there's the two on the corner of Chestnut and Main, and those are officially dead completely, one hundred percent dead. There's nothing on them, it hasn't been all year. Um, they're pretty dried out and we're losing a lot of limbs on those. The ones on Franklin, same thing. They're completely dead, there's no growth on them whatsoever. There's splits on a couple of them and the branches have been falling quite a bit into the road. Uh, dry branches, dry rotted branches, so. Um, like I said, Cedar Street, we decided to monitor, give them another chance, just in case we did. You know, we thought if worst comes to worst, we'll trim some of the bigger branches when time comes. We'll have to apply to, you know, get some of the bigger limbs out. But uh, we want to give them a chance. We're not here to cut trees just for the sake of countries. It's about safety. At least on my end, always about safety and those.
Sounds like the two that you want to take down are actually dead, dead, dead.
Yes, they're dead, dead. Actually, that we applied for Franklin and the corner of Chestnut and Main are dead, dead. Those are dead.
Is there, is there wiggle room anywhere near them to replant? And I bring that up because. We've come back to this many times. I think the last time we had a discussion about this, Marcelo raised a good point of. We need to start thinking about the habit of replanting at least a couple of trees for every one we take down. Now, that's going to require a wider conversation about funding, et cetera, et cetera. And I think we as a planning board need to start thinking that way. But I am curious, at these, these two locations where the trees are truly dead, is there room for replanting?
Well, uh, there may be. It depends on what you want to put there. Now, the ones on Chestnut, to believe, believe it or not, are right near a sewer main. There's a sewer main that comes right around that corner there. So you got to be careful with anything that has deep roots. You know, you're looking at maybe um, an evergreen. If you want to put some kind of evergreen, I'd say something like that. Um, anything with real deep, deep, heavy, big, a tree that's going to grow large will not work in that corner anyway, be in the, mostly in the road. It's a small corner. You know what I mean? Those are two pines, so they grew pretty tall, but they didn't stick out in the road. So that's, you got to take that into consideration. Same with Franklin. These are really along the edge of the road. Um, the other thing you got to consider, if you're going to do plantings in the future, removing the stumps would have to come out and that's a big process. Um, it's a lot of work. I mean, they might get an opportunity in the future to put something in there. And like you said, that's something that's going to have to be a different conversation, you know, like you said, funding, deciding what size trees, you know, what are the limits, what kinds? Things like that.
Yeah, and, and I, and I think that's kind of where I want to go with this, where I feel like. It's not necessarily about replanting in the exact same location. It's more about the public. If you think about it, it's a public way, it's a scenic route. There's a public interest. It's almost like a sliver of public ownership across that entire. Public way. And so we don't need to replant right there. We have a right technically to replant anywhere on it.
I think, I think this is going to be a longer conversation and it's actually one I talked. I don't, I don't remember if I mentioned it in planning board or not, but as far as like the, my role on the CPC. There may be opportunities and Roy is very um, uh, familiar with the CPC and maybe he knows more about this than I do. That there may be opportunities for funding trees through the CPC. And so that would, that would be something I would hope to um, dive into a little bit more. In, in maybe in the upcoming winter months about how that might happen. If there's not funding in DPW. Maybe there's funding in CPC that these things can work together, right?
And I guess where I'm at is I, I, I want to start cutting these trees down with, with some action. Which is to start going to CPC, to start looking at funding, to start actually doing those things. I don't want to start taking them down without. Actual actions. So we may not succeed going to CPC, but that should be part of our motion.
Absolutely, well. Yeah, I mean, the motion has to be for the trees, enough, safety first. And then we need to look into this other thing because we can't, we don't know the answer. I want, I want to let Marcelo jump in because he's been waiting.
Uh, no, I, I, a, a lot of what I've said before has been said, so that's good. Uh, thank you Anna for that. Uh, I, on, on regarding a scenic road and, and I, I know Roy mentioned it. I think if uh, we're talking about dead, dead trees, I don't think we need to discuss these that, that, that much. Uh, that, that's dangerous, especially in a corner where people walk and cars drive by, so that I don't think there's any question about that. But the replanting, like Anna said, could be anywhere else. I would like to, as we evaluate this. Um, to, to, to find a mechanism to force the town to always plan. Twice of what's being removed, just like we asked developers to do it. Uh, the, the, it, it is only fair and the town should, should, should fund these, these, these efforts. And the second part, being a scenic road and what that means by definition. I think these trees when removed should be removed with a stump. There's nothing more horrid, the, the, more horrendous that I see in all these towns. All these trees chopped at the base and left there uh, for, for nothing to happen. It looks terrible and we, we, if, if we're talking about a scenic road. I think we should do it right and provide the funding for the DPW to do it correctly.
Well, that's the thing, it's the funding. Um, my job when it comes to the trees is, you know, unhealthy ones, it's safety. My main goal is safety. Uh, pedestrian safety, safety, traffic safety. Unfortunately, the stump. To me is not a safety issue. I know it sounds mean or whatever you want to say. It, you know, once the tree is gone, it's safe. It, the, see, removing the stump is expensive. They could be up to three hundred dollars. And again, if we had the funding, I gladly do it.
No, no, I, I. I think we understand the safety, but, and I know that's your concern, but, but our concern is in addition to that, because we also care about safety first, but. But uh, the town must be able to fund three hundred dollars to remove trees. And do it right and keep a scenic road and, and improve in the public, how, how the, the, the pedestrian and the public route looks. And I think the planning board maybe can help you, provide you with the funding.
I mean, I'm all for it if we can find the funding, that's the key. You know, if you cut, unfortunately, you know, if you cut ten, twelve trees. You know, that's times three hundred, three fifty, it adds up too, and that cuts into my tree money. So if we had other forms of funding. I'm all for it, you know, again, it may be scenic roads, I don't know.
So I assume, Roy, that you would be willing to uh, work with. Me or me because I'm on the CPC or other members of the planning board to try to. Try to find a solution, you know, through DPW. You're, you, you seem open to that.
Yeah, I mean, we are, we're, we're, you know, we, we, we don't have a problem getting rid of them, you know. Again, it, it always boils down to money and where's it coming from and how can we afford to do it without. You know, charging people for it, you know. It, it's a tough one, so again, my main goal is get it down if it's dangerous. And then we have to deal with the rest after, you know. Again, my end of it is safety first, but I'm always willing to talk to somebody. If they have some ideas on how to remove those. Sure, absolutely.
And, and how to plant trees as well, or money for planting trees.
I mean, I, I think the problem is if Roy has a budget, right, to ask Roy. To, to say, hey, Roy, tell us if we should replant is somewhat unfair, because then Roy has to worry about his budget. So I, I think what makes a lot more sense to me is we have Stumpy's that we rely upon all the time. Stumpy doesn't have a budget he has to worry about. We should be asking Stumpy when he provides these letters to offer us input as to Stumpy's recommendation about whether there is room on the public. Way for a replanting, whether the ground, the conditions are appropriate. And what kind of tree of what caliber could survive there. And it should be up to the planning board to then. Seek out funding so that Roy doesn't have to worry about it. I don't want Roy to have to say. No, you can't plan here because we don't have money. That it, that should not be on Roy. That should be on the planning board.
Right, agreed.
So, you know, it, it really troubles me if Roy is thinking, we shouldn't do this because we don't have the money.
No, I, I think we're all saying the same thing.
Yeah, I think we're all saying the same thing. And like I said, I think Roy is very familiar with the CPC process, very familiar. And I'm happy to work with him to try to accomplish goals that meet. Both DPW needs and planning board needs. So that seems like, and, and CPC. Hopefully needs because they have a lot of money to give away to good causes. So hopefully this is one of those areas where that might come together. Let Roy and I talk about it, have a conversation with CPC to see if actually that's. If that's well within their jurisdiction. I'm, I'm, I, I have to ask that question. Does that sound fair?
I, I mean, I think that's the right next step. I, I do think that. And I will send, you know, to Pete my suggestions for what I think we should be asking Stumpy in the future to do. I think a future letter from Stumpy needs a date. I think it needs pictures. I think it needs um, a clarification of what fifty percent or, or less means to recovery. Um, and I think Stumpy's needs to tell us whether there is room for, for replanting on that route, not in the immediate location. But elsewhere on that public way. Those are the four things I'm looking for. If I need to put them in writing and, and I would ask the planning board if they agree with me, if Stumpy should be giving us those four details. So that we have an outside expert, um, and we can better be informed. And yes. Having Tricia go to CPC is exactly what we need, but we're not going to be able to get what we need from CPC with, without having those four data points.
I, I think, I think that's a great idea, Anna. And we should understand that the more detailed the report from Stumpy's, the bigger the bill there is too. Which may be additional funds that we need to ask for, which is fine. But, but the detail, the details cost money as well, right? But I think we can, we can roll that into in a proper evaluation of the tree. As part of that funds that we ask for. So. Let, let us send, send me the list.
Yep.
And we'll get going on that request because. I, I can tell you the CPC doesn't have enough to do, so.
Yeah, and I'm happy to help.
Motion on this, are we ready?
Yes, I think we're ready.
Yeah, and I'll just say I'm happy to help Tricia with the CPC stuff if it comes down to that.
Okay.
I make a motion that we approve for removal of the marked trees on nineteen Franklin. I make a motion that we approve for removal of the marked trees on nineteen Franklin. And zero Chestnut, subject to a preference for stump removal. And there will be continued efforts to replant.
I, I think, though, it is nineteen Franklin and three thirty-one Chestnut.
Yeah, uh, originally, I didn't know what the address was. The, the house is way in the back there, so I just did the corners zero.
I second it.
And the roll call vote, starting with Anna.
Anna Tespitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Okay, Roy, you got your okay.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being so patient.
No, thank you, folks. I know you guys got a lot going on, and I appreciate your fitness, and thank you very much. You have a good night now.
You too. Okay, um, yeah, we, that was a long time coming, so a good, a longer discussion, but um. Um, it's been a long time coming, and we, it needed to happen. So, Anna, you had some good points there, so we will get that taken care of and. Get that ball rolling in twenty twenty-three. Um, next on our agenda is the ten to sixty Main Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review. I see Rich Gordon on. Peter, do you want to introduce this one a little bit for us?
Sure, so, um. Uh, how you doing, Joe? Joe's got his hand up already.
Good, good evening. Uh, may I just address the board on a procedural issue before we get started for obvious reasons? I, I note that, that member, member Vin Cott is not present tonight. And I apologize, I usually am very good at scorekeeping and keeping uh, a, a list of. Whether anyone's missed a member, as we all know, this is a special permit requiring a supermajority, so. Uh, member missing meetings is a critical, and I wanted to make sure that, uh, no one has missed, or that. Uh, member Vin Cott has not already missed a meeting. I, I presume you have the Mullen Rule in effect in Ashland, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and I just wanted to confirm that. And again, Peter, I apologize that I don't have that information uh, on my own. I usually do.
No, no, no apologies necessary. I, I did, I do know, understand that, uh, uh. Playable member Depot Vintec is not here, or is absent tonight. We do have the Mullen Rule in effect, and obviously. This should be the one uh, meeting that she could miss on the special plan.
Okay, so then we're okay to go forward then. All right, then, Peter, I turn it back over to you. Thank you for the opportunity. Thank you, Madam Chair.
No problem.
No problem.
So thank you, uh, just to, to, to get back, uh, the owner, the site, uh, Rich Gordon is here with his team. Give the planning board an update on where things kind of stand. Uh, last time we opened this, this, the reopen, and we heard, uh, deliberation. That was a few months ago. Uh, since that meeting, we did have a meeting, uh, in Town Hall in person with, uh, Scott Gordon. Uh, excuse me, Scott Richardson, who the architect and the designer of the project. I know he is not here tonight, however, tonight we are focusing on the environmental aspects. Um, and so with that, I believe I'm gonna hand it over to Rich, and then Rich can, uh, introduce his team. Uh, I believe we have his environmental, um, expert, uh, and we have our civil engineer on board tonight. Along with, uh, Attorney Joe Anthony Ellis, to discuss where the site stands from an environmental standpoint. So with that said, uh, through your chair to Rich Gordon, uh, please introduce yourself and the team.
Uh, thank you, Peter. Good to see you all again. Rich Gordon. Um, am I unmuted? I'm unmuted. And yes, so tonight we have, uh, George Connors, who can speak to any of the civil aspects of the job. And we have George Campbell, who will be speaking on any environmental questions and everything related to that, to the project.
All right, who is, who's starting first, Rich, and do they have visuals that they're able to put up, uh, as they speak?
Uh, so yeah, why don't we start with George Campbell? Are you good to go and give everybody an overview of where we're at? Um, with relation to.
Sure, Rich. Thanks, um. Uh, good evening, uh, happy holidays to everyone. Uh, I'll just briefly talk a little bit about myself. I'm a licensed site professional. I've been a licensed site professional for twenty-five years. I gave myself thirty-five years of experience. I've worked on. Hundreds of sites in the Commonwealth. Um, I believe this project's a, a, a great project, uh, to provide housing in Metro West. Um, the environmental concerns, uh, let me talk a little bit about it. It's a, it is currently a closed site. Uh, for commercial use. Um, as we all know, uh. We'd like to redevelop it for commercial and residential use. Um, additional response actions are needed, um, and those response actions are, uh, twofold. Uh, there is a potential for, uh, vapor intrusion, uh, in buildings. Uh, that vapor intrusion can be eliminated, uh, the potential can be eliminated, uh, by. Installation of vapor barriers. Um, and I think most of you probably already looked at the plans. Uh, there is no, uh, ground for residential development proposed. Um, it's all gonna be upstairs. Um, but any ground floor, uh, enclosed space, um, will be, uh. Uh, completed, the construction will be completed with vapor barriers. Um, following the construction, um, there'll be indoor air testing. Uh, that'll be conducted prior to occupancy, um, to ensure that the, the, uh. Residential spaces are, uh, safe. Uh, to occupy, uh, and, uh. Mass DEP has been, uh, involved with this project. Uh, they, during the construction, uh, and during the testing. Uh, they'll be onsite, uh, they've been invited onsite, and they'll be, uh, every step of the way, they'll be. Part of the project. Um, the second, uh, concern is, uh, soils during construction. Uh, we anticipate there'll be, it's, it's an old, an old site, uh, I think as most of you know. Uh, we anticipate there'll be some soils, uh, encountered that will be managed appropriately. In accordance with Mass DEP rules. And, uh, that soil, uh, will be handled, uh, and sampled and disposed of properly. Uh, tho- those are the two, uh, main environmental issues, uh, and certainly, uh, happy to answer any questions.
When, when you say that the soil would be disposed of properly, like, how much? How, how much soil do you anticipate? What, you know, is it a certain layer of soil? Can you give us more information about? What needs to come out of that site, or if it's unknown, because it still needs to be tested, or?
Um, yeah, back in, th- there's been really extensive testing done, uh, and the site was, uh, closed back. Uh, closed for commercial use back in twenty-eleven, so, you know, almost twelve years ago. Um, but certainly, uh, during construction, uh, we anticipate there'll be, uh, some. Uh, which, uh, soils impacted by volatile organic compounds. And those, uh, soils will be stockpiled, uh, and it'll be sampled. For disposal parameters, uh, and, uh, handled in accordance with Massachusetts contingency plan.
So, so we don't know how much soil yet, because it's part of the testing. Process as they, as they stockpile and test and stockpile and test, is that right?
Yeah, tha- that's correct. We, we anticipate there'll be up to five hundred cubic yards of soil.
That will need to be removed.
Correct.
And, and replaced by other fill, clean filler, if needed.
That's correct.
And then can I ask, um, when you said the site was closed for commercial use twelve years ago, of course. Of course, the site's being used now for commercial use. So what does that mean? What do you mean it was closed?
Um, it was closed, uh, the, uh, the process is, uh, a licensed site professional. Uh, uh, prepares, uh, essentially a study. Uh, based on testing of groundwater and soils, and, uh. That, uh, report says there's no significant risk. It's, it's, there's no risk. To, uh, the occupants for commercial use. And, uh, the licensed site professional and, and the property owner at the time, uh, needs to sign. Uh, essentially sign off on that determination, uh, based on testing, based on groundwater and soil testing data. That there is no significant risk. And, and I should add that, uh, the site was, uh, uh, audited. Uh, by Mass DEP. And just, just back up a little bit, uh, the way that, uh, sites, uh, contaminated sites. Uh, brownfield sites, and I, I would call this a brownfield site, uh, because it's, uh, really underutilized, or is full potential. Uh, the way it works is, uh, that sufficient testing, uh, needs to occur. And then based on that data, soil and groundwater data, a determination can be made by a, a licensed person, a licensed site professional. Uh, and the property owner, that this site, uh, meets a condition of no significant risk. To, for commercial use.
I, I think I'm just maybe misunderstanding the term closed. When I, when I hear the site's closed for commercially, somebody can jump in, because I, I think I'm missing something. That to me means that there shouldn't be any commercial functions there, because it's closed, it's dangerous. Or are you saying the issue is closed, we've looked?
The issue is closed. I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear on that.
Just my inexperience with this kind of, uh, this kind of endeavor, so I appreciate you humoring me.
Yeah, uh, it's closed in that the investigation is closed.
Got it, thank you.
Sure.
I hope I wasn't the only one not following, but.
Yeah, I, I, I was a little confused by that too, and I appreciate the clarification. So. So just so I understand, another term that you used, I think you referred to the site as a, is it brownfield site, is that right?
I, I definitely consider this, uh, brownfield site that it's, it really is an old industrial site. Uh, you know, been occupied for a long time, and, uh, brownfields is, is really EPA defines brownfields as. Uh, any contaminated, uh, property that is under, underutilized.
So it's still, is it still, uh, characterized that way by the EPA right now?
Uh, yeah, I would think it's, it's pretty much, uh, it is really a generic term, uh, brownfields. But i- i- the point is that it, there is some, uh, contamination. And, uh, the, uh, the brownfields is, it means that it's, it's underutilized. It's, it's could be utilized. At a higher level, I'll put it that way.
Are there state, um. Are there state proceedings that, that you have to kind of go through to get this approved, that the use you're proposing?
Uh, a- absolutely, and, uh, let me, uh, explain again, that, and I use the term site closure, but. It's really, uh, sufficient investigations were conducted, you know, almost twelve years ago. Uh, and, uh, opinions, uh, licensed site professional opinion, uh, and with DEP oversight. Was that the site was, uh, acceptable. There was no risk, no significant risk for commercial use. So that, that was completed, uh, almost twelve years ago, uh, but to, um. Permit or allow residential use, um, absolutely, uh. All the work, including, uh, vapor barriers and disposal of contaminated soil, uh. Needs to happen in accordance with Mass DEP rules, absolutely, uh, and we filed.
I guess, and I guess I'm curious more, like, so twelve years ago, you guys had to go through and get some kind of official. I assume state document that said commercial use is fine. Do you have that for residential use?
N- no, uh, but, uh, the way it works in Massachusetts is that. Uh, the documents, there, there'll be documents submitted, uh, in accordance with Mass DEP rules. Uh, at the end of the process, after the vapor barriers are installed. After the soil is managed and disposed of properly, um, at the end of the process. Um, there'll be an LSP opinion that residential use is, is acceptable. Uh, but it doesn't happen at the beginning of the process. It happens at the end of the process. And, and absolutely have to follow, uh, Mass DEP rules.
I, I have a question. Can you clarify, you've referred to vapor barriers a couple of times, uh. And, and you mentioned about, uh, enclosed spaces, um, on the ground. But I mean, vapor barriers are required by the building code, but, um, I've worked on sites where, where the entire site has to be. Uh, capped with a vapor barrier and, and, and sites that have, uh, issues like this. Wh- which, which of those, which type of vapor barrier are you referring to?
Um, the, the, uh, um. There's a, there's a, there's several that are acceptable, uh, and it could be what's called a liquid boot. A vapor barrier, and it's in, or a Drago vapor barrier. There's several that are acceptable, and, uh. It's, uh. You know, following installation, uh, as, as I said, uh, after the vapor barrier is installed. Uh, there's a, there's a topping layer on top of the vapor barrier, uh, and then. Uh, at the end of the process, there'll also be indoor air testing.
Uh, but, but, but I'm, yeah, I, I, I get that. I guess my question is about the location. The, are, are you talking about only on the building's footprint, or in the entire site?
Uh, not the entire site. Any enclosed space, uh, and there'd be rooms, there's. Uh, the majority of the site, and I don't have square footage, I know that's been submitted to you folks, but. Uh, the majority of the site will be, uh, open air garage. Um, so we're not proposing vapor barrier at the open air garage, but any enclosed space, enclosed rooms. Uh, and that would be, uh. You know, there's, there's several rooms, that's approximately in the garage, I believe, and I don't have this in front of me, I apol- I apologize, but it might be. Uh, twenty-five hundred square feet under the garage, those enclosed rooms, and also a ten main, uh.
How was that? How about the, the buildings that, that will remain? Would you have to apply some, some technology?
Absolutely, absolutely. The vapor barrier will be installed at any enclosed space inside. Inside spaces, not spaces that are outside, let's say, you know, that are open air. Will not, the plan is not to install vapor barrier in open air spaces, but any enclosed building. Enclosed building spaces, absolutely, will, vapor barrier will be installed.
So are you, are you working together with, um, the EPA? Brownfield Coordinator to make this happen already, or is this something that happens? I, I guess I'm trying to figure out, how do you assess with the right? How to do this the right way?
Well, I mean, that's essentially, that's how, why you hire a, a licensed site professional, but absolutely, we're working with Mass DEP on this, abso- absolutely.
So that, okay, so that's, that work is ongoing already to make sure.
Absolutely, yes, yes.
So I'm, I'm still a little, and, and, you know, maybe Peter can clarify this. I'm, I'm not a hundred percent clear as to the process. Because what I'm hearing is that there was some kind of letter allowing commercial use. At the site, either from the federal government or the state, but there's not going to be one for residential until later. And that part is not very clear to me, so is that something, Peter, you can clean, clear up for us?
A little bit, and, and, and please know, uh, I've been working myself, you know, I've been working with, with their application teams. And with DEP and EPA on this site, and, and, and so, um. I think what I have collected through conversations with the DEP and EPA is that. Guess the procedure's a little, it's a little bit different, and I think we're just trying to wrap our own general bit. Is that there is a restriction on this land, right? Uh, and to remove the restriction. Work has to be done, and it has to be, be shown, right? And so theoretically, we are going, if, if a, if a project is to be approved, right? The work needs to be done, such as the installation of the vapor barrier, the, 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 the soil needs to be pulled out. And shipped away, but most importantly, the work of that, the, it was the work and the installation of that barrier. Um, needs to be inspected and looked at by all parties, DEP and EPA. For them to move forward and remove the current restriction on that site, and so.
Almost like they don't decide if the restriction is lifted until.
Correct.
Until the effort is made to attempt to mitigate.
Correct.
Yeah, they need to see the passing test reports even, I think.
Before they rule on anything, they want to inspect the work, to say, yes, this qualifies. And this Kevin's a hundred percent right. They want to see the air quality testing come back, the soil testing come back. And so that's their key to making their decision.
And that testing is not done yet.
So that testing will not be done until construction is complete. So one would say you're putting the cart before the horse. However, this is how the DEP and EPA work. This is in a process that I know it up. It is almost a, it's a level of trust, right? Is that the RAM plan, which is the environmental plan that's put forth, that's agreed upon between the application team, the Department of the DEP and EPA. That is kind of agreed upon in trust. And then the application team, through any proposed indoor approved construction, would have to show through construction methods that what they build meets uh, from a quality control standpoint, what is necessary for them, the DEP and EPA, to make a decision and to edit and to regulate, to edit the regulated document, um, which will allow therefore residential to be installed.
Yeah, I know. It's, it's definitely an interesting dynamic because essentially we as a local planning board, the bylaw, you know, has some wiggle room as to what we're trying to do. And, you know, whether it's the Ashland Downtown District Bylaw that talks about a vibrant, you know, quality of life of residents, et cetera, et cetera. So to me, you know, opening up a can of worms, no pun intended here. It does relate to the quality of life, right? But we don't really know what's there until we open it. So.
I would, I would.
Let me just, can I interject there a little bit?
Wait, hold on a minute. I want, you know, I want Marcelo started to speak. I wanted to be him to be able to finish this thought.
I, I, I just want to address Anna's concern, which is, which makes sense. I, I, I think the, the process, um, is logical because the, 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 the weight of, of the result is really on the developer. Because if they don't build things correctly and they don't pass a test, they will not be able to utilize that, that, that building. So it's really on, on, uh, on their best interest to, to follow all kinds of required procedures. Take all the tests and pass all the tests, uh, to, 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 to be able to get a certificate of occupancy at the end.
Yeah, I know. It makes sense for, for the federal or state level. I'm saying that we are at the local level. We're at the beginning. We have our own rights to have our own inquiry as to how to apply the by, by law. So I'm not disagreeing with the way the feds or the state is doing it. I'm, I'm commenting on the fact that we are not the state or the federal government and we, we get the bylaw and our own ability to ask questions and inquire.
I would, I would say that probably by following the rules that they need to follow through the EPA and the DEP, all they can possibly be allowed to do is leave that site cleaner than it exists today. So however it was closed out, I bet the asphalt is a cap of what was previously tested and that asphalt is crumbling. Like it could go, you know, eat the dirt off the ground and sick from it now, but they're going to need to put new soil under their new asphalt and it will be clean.
I, I would like to see the document from 12 years ago that allowed commercial use. I think that will be insightful. Is that something that the applicant can provide?
Yeah, we can start to collect documents like that. I think it's important to understand that this kind of, um,
Sure.
mediation and it's not, it's not the, obviously the scale of projects that I work on, but in my study of sustainability, this is how brownfield sites are reused and, and brought back into, you know, rehabilitated. So brought back into society is, you know, how, how do you do that? How do you make something that has been destroyed in a way? Um, how do you bring it back? And so these are the procedures put in place to make that happen. And so, um, except even in terms of sustainability and sustainable cities, this is how we reuse our sites.
Yeah, can I just, uh, interject there?
Go ahead.
Certainly the, uh, the closure, I'm going to say closure documents, the risk assessment, uh, the, uh, LSP opinion, uh, from almost 12 years ago, that's certainly available. And we certainly can provide that. And, uh, you know, as Peter mentioned, uh, we've submitted a RAM plan, which details the work that will be completed on the site. Um, absolutely will be working with Mass DEP, absolutely following, uh, Mass DEP rules, uh, to make this project happen.
I have, I have one concern. We're talking about like it's a stagnant contamination, but I believe that's in the plume. And that, and I understand that DEP, maybe EPA both have jurisdiction there and hopefully are handling it properly. But I do think, um, the planning board does have to pay attention to that and also make sure the public is properly informed about what's going on there.
What, what is?
And I feel like maybe just saying it's about, um, environmental at this site isn't probably quite good enough to reach that public notice bar.
Right. So, so how do they do that? How do they deal with that, uh, Mr. Campbell? With, um, an ongoing perhaps problem like, like the plume? Or is that something that is a, um, not an unusual condition inside, in sites like this? Is that taken into account in the various tests that need to be done?
Um, I, I would second what you said, that it's, it's not unusual. Uh, there have been many sites in Massachusetts, sites that I've worked on, uh, where there is a, a plume. Uh, and, uh, it's gradually declining. It just takes a very long time. It's not a hundred percent clean, unfortunately, um, but it declines gradually over time. Uh, so it's not unusual situation. And, uh, you know, there is really a lot of testing, both from almost 12 years ago. And, uh, we've done testing this year. Uh, we did eight soil borings. Uh, all the soil that we tested was below, uh, residential standards. Uh, and I'm not saying there isn't contaminated soil there. I'm not trying to say that. Um, but we did additional testing this year. Uh, and we recently tested, uh, four monitoring wells on the site. Uh, there are volatile organic compounds. It's lower than, uh, what was historically measured. Uh, you know, 12 years ago, um, but there is volatile organic comp- compounds on the site. Uh, there's, there's matter of public record, absolutely. But the, uh, development certainly can happen, uh, you know, properly. Uh, you know, with, with the contamination present.
I mean, like, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll second a lot of the points that were made. I agree with Tricia a hundred percent that anytime you develop sites like this, it's a fabulous opportunity. And, and there is development that we want to see at sites like this because we want to see cleanup at sites like this, right? That's, there's that element of it. Um, I also think that we have some duty to disclose to the public, not just to say, oh, somewhere in the world of public record, the public can find these safety documents. Good luck. Um, I, I think we do have some obligation as a local planning board to understand what we're getting ourselves into. And to me, there's an equity issue here. We're going to put affordable housing in theory on top of a plume. I want to say that out loud because we, we choose to put affordable housing on sites like this.
Well, remember that seventy-five percent of the housing is not affordable.
Understood, but we're, but we're, but we're viewing this project as an opportunity for housing, right? And, and part of the element of how this is being presented to us is you're going to get more affordable. So I'm going to put it out there. This is also an equity conversation and that's important. Um, and that this is not this pristine, perfect, healthy land that we're talking about. We're talking about a site that's challenging. Um, and so, you know, those things do need to be said out loud. And that is proper public disclosure.
So with that, could you maybe just go a little more into the history of the site? What the past source of contamination was and what if any remediation was done to close it? Or if it was just simple testing? And maybe what level of ELCs you've been finding there? Um, yeah, sure, sure. Uh, the site, this area of Ashland, and I'm sure there's folks in your town uh, that know a lot more than I do. Um, but, uh, it's, it's had, it's had a history. It was textile, textile manufacturing there. Uh, it's, it's, it's an old site. Um, so it's, it's, it's got a long history. There's been commercial use on the property for a long time. Commercial and industrial use. Also, unfortunately, the site is impacted by an upgrading release set from Niantz. Uh, and so we do have volatile organic compounds, uh, from the upgrading release Niantz. Um, there are, are volatile organic compounds, uh, on the site itself. Uh, likely from, uh, floor drains that were closed, they were properly closed on the site. Uh, and, uh, as, as I mentioned, there was really a lot of testing done, uh, starting in the nineties, uh, up until the site was, as I said, I use the term closed. It's not, the site isn't closed. Uh, you know, it's, the site is open, but, uh, sufficient work was done where an LSP opinion with Mass DEP oversight, uh, saying was filed saying that there is no significant risk at the site. It's, it's really important to remember that, no significant risk at the site. Uh, so that's in a nutshell, um, you know, this, the history at the site, but really a lot of testing was done, you know, starting in the nineties, uh, up into the zeros, uh, up until two thousand and eleven, when, uh, the LSP opinion was filed. And Mass DEP was definitely, and US EPA, uh, wasn't involved in that process. Uh, and, uh, you know, I don't see the contamination here as, uh, preventing the development that is proposed. So was there any remediation? Is there a cap in place or anything like that or? Uh, there was remediation at the floor drains. Yes. So there was, was some remediation, yes. Do you have any sense of the levels of contamination? Like when you send this stuff offsite, is it on to Michigan or is it in-state landfills like? Michigan guys is where you send the real dirty stuff. Yeah, it's, it could be out of state. Uh, it's, it's not likely Michigan. It may be New Hampshire. Uh, more likely, there's more facilities open in New Hampshire than they are in Massachusetts. Unfortunately, a lot of the disposal facilities are closing in Massachusetts or have closed. Uh, but I don't expect it to go to Michigan. But, uh, you know, we did test, uh, groundwater for monitoring wells. Two of the wells were below, uh, all standards, uh, and two wells were above standards. There are volatile organic compounds. Uh, one of the wells was an upgrading well. So what we're seeing is from Niantz. Um, compared to the, you know, two thousand and eleven and, and previous data, the, the levels are, are lower that we've, that we've detected. Uh, so there is some progress here, but these plumes, you know, they last, unfortunately, they last a long time. And, uh, you know, there is still volatile organic compounds, you know, in groundwater and in soil.
Um, Rich, did you have more? Uh, uh, not to cut off this conversation, but was there another part of this that you were going to discuss? So that the, the, the civil engineering part with Mr. Connors is, is, was there another part of the presentation that you were looking to happen?
Uh, well, not really. I mean, you know, George Campbell on the environmental end is, is the big part of it. And, um, you know, a lot of great questions from you guys. I think it's all very relevant. And, you know, hopefully he was able to answer all that. Um, as far as the civil end with George Connors, it's really, if you guys have any questions. I mean, as you know, George has designed all the drainage and the grading and, and all that site plan. So if, if you all have any questions relative to that for him, um, that's really why he's here tonight.
I see Kathy Rooney's hand up, so I'll, um, maybe let her jump in.
Hi, thank you, um, Ms. Kendall. I do have a question. I've had some discussions with, um, another professional who works, um, with a big building and construction company and excavating. And the type of work that you, you've been doing in terms of being a licensed site professional is similar to what, um, she did for a while as a living. And digging in the ground is going to stir things up. So what happens if you get partly through this process? And, you know, uh, the plume moves, some kind of fissures there, you expose it. What, what's that going to do to your project and how's that going to work? And how do you, I mean, I don't, I don't actually understand how, how you could take all this work on. And then you get the letter after you've done it. Kind of makes sense in a convoluted way, but it seems to me like you all are spending a lot of money to do residential there. So I'm, I'm curious how that, how that works and what, what's the plan? What's your plan B or Plan C when, if it goes bad?
Um, I, I guess I, I, I'm sorry, I don't really quite, uh, follow the, the question. I, uh, you know, there's, I guess, going back to, uh, the amount of testing. There's really been a lot of testing done on the property, uh, back, starting in the nineties. Uh, so, uh, I think there is a lot of groundwater data, historical and recent. Um, and I don't see really any, um, any of the data that, that I have uh, preventing this development as, you know, on proper, with proper conditions. Uh, you know, as I mentioned, installation of a vapor barrier, uh, removal of, of impacted soil uh, in accordance with, you know, we have submitted a, a plan to Mass DEP, uh, to, to, uh, you know, undertake this work. So.
Right, right. That all sounds great, but my understanding from this person was that once you start doing a lot of ground disturbance, or maybe I can use the analogy to, once you start digging in the ground and you find ledge, you know, some of the projects that we're familiar with in town, there's been a lot of wet. All of a sudden, the costs of the project have jumped considerably because they had to hack through the ledge to, to do, you know, get foundations put in and things like that. So I'm just asking the question in terms of what happens if you discover that despite all of the testing that you've been doing for years and years on the site or that has been done on the site, you open up a Pandora's box. What's the plan?
Well, maybe I could jump in here for a little bit. I think you're talking a little bit more about, um, soil management and that end of it, Catherine. And, um, that is what I do for a living on the site work end of things. So, you know, there's not any really, there's no way, real way to disturb the soil. There's going to be a cut and a fill on the job. And then wherever there's cuts, that soil gets managed and there's a process as George has laid out. So in this case, um, our goal is to keep the site fairly well balanced. Um, as far as not having an overage or a large amount of export. And that's the way George Connors has designed the civil. So we will have an idea of a quantity. Um, I don't think we've done a full cut and fill on it at this point, but our goal is to minimize the exposure. And as far as, um, you know, going through the process, everything gets segregated, everything gets stockpiled, everything gets tested. And there's the process that, that George has laid out. And basically every five hundred cubic yards gets tested. Um, and then from there, there's what's called bills of lading and manifest. And depending on the levels of contamination, it determines where we take the soil. Um, there's no ledge on this job site. So yes, that I, I understand what you're saying about that. We hit it, you know, oftentimes on sites and that is a big cost impact. But that's what the whole point of soil borings are, and we've done that and we've done testing. So we have a pretty good idea overall what's there. Um, and, you know, as Kevin had mentioned, which is a great question, where does it go? Cause yeah, you could send it to Minerva in Ohio and it gets really crazy expensive. But based on what we've done for testing at this point, we do have a, a pretty good general idea. And, um, I think George is right. I think there's going to be material that goes to New Hampshire. And then there could be, you know, lower levels of contamination that go to lined or unlined landfills. But we will have a, a, a better concept of the soil management plan as this progresses. And we'll be able to quantify that a little bit more. And as far as budgeting for that, you know, that's on our end to quantify and, and, you know, have a proper um, contingency for that. So I'm hoping that answers your question.
I mean, if I could kind of add a, uh, somewhat of a response, but I'm also hearing a potential opportunity, which is there's obviously a cost, Rich, to you, and you're saying, let me take care of it. This is my problem. Um, on, on the other hand, on the other hand, it's kind of our problem in the sense that if we're going to be reviewing an application and approving it, there's sort of this discussion that we've already started, right? The, the last meeting we had where we started this challenging conversation about all of the amenities, infrastructure things, design elements that we as a planning board would love to see. And you were like, it's too expensive. I mean, not those exact words, but that's the theme, right? This is what we're going to keep bumping into. So when I hear, you know, brownfield development, which is an opportunity. So when I hear, you know, brownfield development, which is an opportunity, there's all these challenges, but there's also an opportunity. So I believe, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that in Massachusetts, there is the possibility of TIFs, which is tax incremental financing. There are communities that choose to work with developers to properly develop these kinds of sites to allow for infrastructure amenities, public interest type of things to happen so that if your costs as a developer are challenged by the remediation and the cleanup, there could be partnerships with our community to fix this, clean it and develop it in a way that we are happy as a community. You're happy as a developer, things are safe and we actually get the infrastructure we want. So I'm a little curious if that has been discussed or thought about. Uh, as far as how to approach this, if you've considered TIFs, if that has been kind of researched.
Well, to a point, you know, um, I may not actually be building this project as we've talked about, you know, I'm going to team up with a national developer. Um, who will have, you know, more expertise on that. But as far as your safety concern um, that you bring up, you know, that's all been addressed. Everything has a process and has to go through that. Um, there is no danger to the public with any of this. Um, as far as, you know, the fiscal end of it, you know, infrastructure is a fixed cost for us and, and we're going to know what that is. We're going to have our arms around it when we do finance the project. Um, as far as your comment about bumping heads for, um, what I would call wishlist items, um, you know, that's a subjective thing and you know, there's certain things we can do and there's certain things we can't do. And we can only go so far with amenities and finishes and things like that. So that's a design uh, discussion and for another day. But as far as, you know, teaming up with the community and getting other type of funding, you know, we will be looking into that and researching that as this progresses.
Yeah, I mean, I, I just see opportunity there. I do.
I think there is, and it's a good point. Thank you.
So I, I, I just, I just want to add that I, I, I'm, I'm on the environmental side. Um, I think I, I agree with, with, with Rich. Uh, if, and I've done projects with these type of contr- constraints before. As long as the data has been collected and the, and, and all the rules are followed and there's, there's methods and regulations for how do you do? Uh, the type of foundations that they're going to do or, and, and how much site they, they, they have to move uh, and test. Um, I, I think that's a, 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 a well-known procedure in Massachusetts and uh, to me, if, as long from the environmental point of view only, uh, as long as that all the processes are followed, which they have to be, I, I, I don't think that, 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 that will, that will have any unreasonable, um, impact on the town. I think, I, I'm thinking more about like what Kevin was saying. I think by, 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 by the developer being forced to follow all the rules that Massachusetts have for sites like this, uh, the, the ultimate, um, benefit to the town is to have a site that, that is mu- much less dangerous to the river, to, to the, to the residents and, and to the general public. So, um, I, 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 I don't think that's an issue to, to me.
Um, I think we're, we're at the point and, and if people have final comments to make for this evening, obviously we're, we're not done talking about this product project, but otherwise I think we should wrap it up and, and move on for tonight. Um.
And I, um, so we were talking environmental, but I think that overlaps with like the floodplain, um, Conservation Commission, those kinds of things. And I'm not saying we're going to talk about them today, but I don't want to, uh, miss an opportunity to make sure they're mentioned.
I, I think it's, um, I think it's unavoidable that we go through Conservation Commission, right? And that will likely be a, a long and detailed process, I, I would think. Has that? Have, um, have you had any conversations with them already, Rich? I, I think you've answered this question before, but I can't remember.
Uh, we've had some conversation, uh, George Connors. Have you had any recent conversation with Conservation? That you could share with us?
Preparing the notice of intent and the, uh, stormwater, um, by law application. Have the ORAD, the Order of Resource Area delineations. And we're prepared to go forward. We've designed, analyzed the hydrology. And we've looked at, um, requirements for the stormwater and its impact upon the, um, plume and have identified waiver we will need for that, so we don't have any infiltration. Those documents are kind of lengthy and complex and they'll probably be filed within the next few weeks with Conservation for the notice of intent for work on site.
Right, thank you.
Thanks, George.
Let me just make one more comment.
Sure.
Um, we had a meeting with EPA and DEP about a month ago. George Campbell, myself and Joe Antelis. And, and they were quite, um, happy with the procedures that we laid out and the idea that we get to the, uh, goal that we envisioned.
Is there any, did, did they have anything, um, provide you anything in writing on, on that? Any response to what you presented or was it just a conversation?
It was conversation on, um, what we're proposing, what George had proposed and where we want to go. And Peter was, you're actually, um, convened that meeting, so he can attest to that, I believe.
Uh, I do concur. Uh, I was asked to organize that meeting. I organized that meeting. And I think, uh, the application team and full faith is working with, and I can attest, is working with DEP and EPA and, uh, you know, it, it's, it's obviously ongoing conversation, right? However, I think environmental components of the site have been identified and are a number, you know, a, a very, you know, high topic that are being discussed and are being analyzed. So I do concur. I believe the application team is working closely with DEP and EPA, looking at the monitoring wells, the RAM plan. Um, and, and rightfully so, because I think that is one of everyone's, uh, major concerns when, when, um, I don't want to say entering, but you know, in, in entering the proposed development, right? Is that we're, we're number one, uh, we're safe. If we're bringing, uh, residents onto the site and more public, uh, from a pedestrian standpoint. So, uh, it was a good meeting and everyone.
Thanks, Peter. Mr. Antelis, did you have something you want to add?
No, I, I thank you, uh, Matt. You know, the comment I wanted to make was the one that Mr. Connors made about the meeting that Peter was, uh, added, that he arranged. It was an excellent meeting and, uh, you know, from the perspective, and I think all of the questions that the board has asked tonight are very appropriate regarding this situation. Um, and being at the meeting answered some of the questions I had myself relative to how these things are handled. I've been involved in a couple of other matters like this. And from what I heard, the protocols, George has properly addressed all of the protocols and I was frankly very impressed with, with his knowledge of the site. So feel comfortable and I, again, I think the questions were appropriate. Those are the same ones I had myself. So that's not why. I think they were appropriate, but um, I, I do think we've made a lot of progress in that regard. Thank you, Matt. Yeah. I, I know you got a busy agenda, so.
We always do.
Yes, you do.
Yeah, thank, thank you. I, I think obviously it's not the end of the conversation we'll have about this, but I appreciate that we're kind of literally starting from the ground up, like at this point and, um, and trying to address these issues. But I think at this point, um, I think it's appropriate to ask for a continuance sometime into the new year. Um, I'm not sure when, um, uh, when would be appropriate that we get together and, and what the next step would be if we would be looking at the design modifications at that time? Or is there more discussion happen first between this point and, and that point?
Chris, I, I do want to say at some point we should open it up to the public relative to the environmental concerns and.
Oh, sure. We can do that now for a few minutes.
I think that's a pretty important thing to do.
Yeah. Does, if, if there's any comments from the public at, at this point, environmental, um, comments that you don't think have been answered or you want clarification on, uh, please raise your hand. Thank you, Anna. That's a good point.
Can I actually ask one more environmental question?
No, Kevin.
When we went on the site walk a while back, I, I think it was Rich who's with us who, and mentioned that that concrete wall along the back along the river was kind of, was some sort of existing perimeter that you, you're not allowed to touch anything outside of that. Is that related to this previous site closure or is that something different?
No, that's, that's just an existing condition that has not changed. Um, has nothing to do with the site closure.
And, and so that's an existing condition from who? I, I guess, is there any way that like we'd, they'd be allowed to do a one-time cleanup back there to, you know, the little river walk to have a view of the river in the distance?
We will be able to do a cleanup, you know, it'll just have to be, you know, monitored, monitored and, you know, structured. Um, I don't think that we would be allowed to go in there and cut trees or do anything like that. But certainly, you know, trash and debris and all of the stuff that's back there. Um, and some overgrowth to a limit would absolutely be addressed.
Could we, I actually think that's a great point. Like who gave the restriction? Can we see it? I, I, I would like to see the written document that puts that restriction on, on the property. Um, that, that is not very clear to me because I thought it was absolutely related to the, um, to the plume issue. And if it's not, I'd like a better understanding of what it is because if we can contain, if we can somehow rethink that restriction, I'd like to know who created it and, and what the limits are.
What, what restriction are you referring to?
Just, just the wall in back, the, the wall in back. Uh, Rich, Rich said that it was kind of untouchable in a way. And we were just, I guess the question is, why? Or who said so? You know, or you know, is there an opportunity to clean it up and?
Yeah.
Better than it is right now?
I assumed it was the federal government or the state that was requiring that for safety reasons relating to the plume. If that's not the reason, if it's there for some other reason, I'd like to know who put it there and why.
Uh, it's under ten, three, ten CMR ten fifty-eight Rivers Protection Regulations. And the, the, the river from the mean annual high waterline out a hundred feet, you can't touch it all. Um, that's a natural area. It's not quite a hundred feet on the site. Probably more like fifty. And then we hit the wall. And then from a hundred to two hundred is a outer period. So those are DEP and, um, state statute, um, uh, Wells Protection Act, regulated areas. We probably can go in there and do some cleanup, but we can't, um, go in there and do work.
Basically saying it's a no-touch zone.
Yes.
No touch zone.
Okay. All right, um.
If I could just say one more thing, just, um, just to give townsfolk some assurances, uh, we've been working with Mast EP and we will continue to work with Mast EP. They will be on the site uh, during construction, during installation of the vapor barriers, uh, during testing. So just to give the town some more assurance. Uh, we'll be working with Mast EP the whole way.
All right. Thank you. I'm going to take these three hands that are, that are up. Um, and I, I do ask you to keep your, keep your comments brief. Um, as we were wrapping up this discussion and certainly will, will be having it again. So, um, uh, Joan, um, you, you want to unmute?
Yes, thank you. Um, I just, I, I apologize if this has been answered, but it was, it was a, a bit, um, challenging to understand everything that was being talked about. But, um, I understand that the areas that are going to be closed are going to need vapor barriers and that a good portion of the new buildings will, uh, that are under consideration would be, um, the bottom floor would be parking. But the older buildings are enclosed. So is it safe to assume that there will be a vapor barrier, complete vapor barrier, um, determination for those buildings also? And I just want to make a comment that I, having been around for a lot of years for, um, through the night, some of the Niantzah um, investigations that I'm going to have some real concerns about having people live above the plume, but um, hopefully that will be, you know, all those things will be addressed completely. So, thank you.
Um, to answer your question, yes, um, all the enclosed spaces, not open air spaces, but all the enclosed spaces, uh, will have a vapor barrier installed.
So, so for instance, Joan, if there was a, um, a, a commercial area being used um, on, in an existing space, they would still have to mediate that space and provide a vapor barrier, um, even even though it's a, it's a first floor space, they would have to do something to put that vapor barrier between the ground and the, um, the existing space.
Correct.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mark DeSoni, would you like to unmute?
Yep. Thank you. Good evening. Mark DeSoni, forty-nine Hawthorne Road. We're, we're informational and progressive. I would like to thank the, the, uh, Mr. Campbell especially and, uh, Mr. Richards. That, um, about the progress of what they, so they're still giving an eye on the, um, on the ground and the, and the plume and everything else that is EDEP and EPA monitored. And it's good to know that somebody is still, is still there. The town is up on it and everything. But I want to just make sure that they said at the end of each of the construction is when it's really going to be really tested and making sure. When will the construction end? Well, you can't say, I, I know you can't say that question. But when the construction is there and surveying the ground and all the testing, the, um, the holes in the ground, the, the test pits, are they going to be monitored as being built or monitored after everything is done? That, that's just my question.
Mr. Campbell, I, I, I think the question is, is, is there testing going on through the construction process or just at the end?
Yes, there will be someone, an environmental professional onsite, uh, during soil excavation. Uh, and there'll be sampling that'll be conducted during excavations. And, uh, sampling and field screening that, that'll happen during construction. So yes.
Okay. You faded a little bit, Mr. Campbell, as you're answering.
Um, Mark, just to also jump in is right now the DEP, the EPA have about, I believe, four testing wells on the site. And all testing wells will be maintained and will be maintained uh, through any construction and well after any construction to allow for continued, uh, measurements, uh, and access.
And will there be, um, representatives from both EPA and DEP onsite as construction goes forth?
I can answer that. Yes. Um, I'm not going to say they're going to be there a hundred percent of the time. Uh, that, that's, that's, that's not likely, but absolutely there, uh, they will be onsite uh, during construction, uh, during, uh, you know, various activities on the site, uh, including indoor air testing, including vapor barrier installation. So yes, um, I'm not going to say to you that they'll be there a hundred percent of the time, but, uh, they absolutely will be onsite and we'll be working with them.
And.
Last question, Mark.
And they may not be, um, the every single second and stuff like that, but they will help, they were kind of making sure they can monitor ground to air vaporizations, right?
Uh, you, you know, absolutely, uh, Mast EP and US EPA, uh, certainly will be onsite. Uh, you know, as I mentioned, uh, they're not going to be there a hundred percent of the time, but uh, certainly we're, we're going to be working with them, uh, throughout the project.
And if we get, this is a bit, it is a bit, this will be, um, and so they will, they not be there all the time, every second. But they will give progressive reports to give to you and then passed on throughout the town officials to make sure.
Um, I, I'm not sure, I'm not sure I really understand the question, but, uh, you know, absolutely will be communicating. Uh, both with, during the project, both with Mast EP, US EPA and, and the town. The town will be, uh, informed of the progress of the project. Absolutely.
I mean, thank you. Thank you, Mark. I'm going to move to Kathy Rooney. Last question.
Sorry, I just wanted to say, first of all, thanks to Rich Gordon for answering. Answering my questions before, so thoroughly before. And then my second question, my my question really is that. Regulation three ten C M R ten fifty eight, do I have that correct? About the rivers and doing work in the back along the wall? I do have that correct, okay, so. Work, I'm assuming means. Actually building something out there as opposed to cleaning up the invasives and restoring. Other to so the invasives don't grow back, is that correct? And it would be subject, obviously, to Conservation Commission permit.
It would require a notice of intent, yes.
Okay. Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Kathy, and so we are going to, where's Peter? We're going to wrap this up for this evening, can you, how do we go about doing that? Oh, you're muted, though.
I'm sorry, I said it wrong. I so obviously, Rich and Joe, obviously, this needs to be continued out, right? And so with that said, our next meeting is going to be the year. And we do, I believe, have a pretty full agenda in our first meeting, which is the twelfth, which is going to have. A couple of big public hearings that are already slated to open. So with that said, I would propose a continuance to the second meeting in January, which would be the twenty sixth. As I pull up my calendar and also to note to the pleading board members, I just finished the two thousand and twenty three schedule. So that will should be coming up and I put that online for all interested parties. But to the applicant, to Rich and Joe, is that amenable to you?
I will confirm tomorrow for you with with an email as I have in the past and I. I I don't, I don't think it's advantageous to any of us to be placed on an agenda where you have other pressing matters. Obviously, this is a complex project and to the extent that we can have our fair share of time, we appreciate that. The board's been very cooperative in that regard, so if it works out well for the board to put us on the twenty sixth, that's the night we'll be there. I don't need to dictate to anyone the schedule, but I think at some point, perhaps we should have a meeting where we discuss. Some of the details of the civil aspects of the project. Madam Chair, I I again, I I, you know, it's come up a couple of times, both in the past and again tonight. So at some point, I guess we've got to get our arms around it and it might not be a bad way to kick off the meeting on the twenty sixth.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can continue this, we can look, you you said you needed to check tomorrow, but we can intend.
I apologize, I'll I'll confirm, Peter has to get that to the town clerk's office and he knows I get it to him first thing on Friday morning. So I'll have it to him, whatever day you tell us.
So Peter, does the does the twenty six sound like the right one to kind of hold to make sure we have sufficient time to?
To give us sufficient time, that's the that's the meeting we have to go to. Our three oh one Pond Street, which is a Shaw Plaza, that will be, that was continued out to the first meeting in February.
Oh, okay.
And I mean, excuse me, in January, it's going to be January twelve. So I think that's going to open. And then obviously, we have another one for the downtown at Homer, around Homer Street. And so our our schedule is back and and and, you know, as far as I know, I hate to tell everybody.
Lovely.
But yeah, with that said, I think the twenty sixth is the right date to give enough time to concentrate on these certain issues.
Okay, okay, sounds good. Can you the hearing and ten sixty main treat till the January twenty sixth meeting?
I'll second that.
Another roll call vote.
Anna Tuskminitsky, aye.
Marcelo, wanna aye?
Bathroom Jersey, aye.
McClynn, aye.
And Tricia, can die, so we are continuing that until June twenty six.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I will confirm the applicant's assent to the continuance by way of an email correspondence to Peter in the morning.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a great night, happy.
Thanks, everyone.
Happy new year.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
Happy holidays.
All right, next on our agenda, and I remind the planning board, or if they need to step away briefly, just. Just do so. So next on our agenda is two twenty five Pond Street Special Permit and Site Plan Review. It's been a while since we've seen this one, Peter, can you just summarize where we are?
Ah, yes, so thank you so much, so tonight we are reopening the two twenty five Pond Street, this is the McDonald's site. So since the, I think by leave, excuse me, let me grab my information. The last time we have heard deliberation on this site was back in August. And so we've continued a couple of times throughout December, and so within December. I mean, within the fall, the applicant has resubmitted some revised plans, I know they're not with Design Review Committee. And I learned prior to this meeting that I forgot to 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 circulate the design review comments and fully apologize for that. But with that said, the applicant here would be Boulder Engineering, they are represented by Eric Dubruel, who's on the call tonight. This is a, this this project proposes the the development of what now and currently is a single drive through lane. Into a dual, into two drive through lanes with two ordering points. Which any anybody, anyone that has visited the McDonald's. Has probably understands that McDonald's and and other food factories, food chains are are going from a single drive through to a double drive through. And this is what the, that's what the application is proposing here tonight. With that, they did add a brand new landscaping island into a buffer area. And then the six foot vinyl fence along the northern property line. And in the proposed project, they are moving the accessible parking from the ones existing.
Can we we bring up the site plans that we can?
Ah, yes. How about I I introduce Eric and Eric can bring up the site plans and give us a update on where everything happens.
Sounds good.
Sorry for being too morning.
No, we just need a visual, and it goes in one ear and out the other, we're visual people.
Peter match it to Eric, Eric, are you on the call?
Yes, thank you, Peter.
Eric, I'm going to make you a co-host.
Perfect, yeah, I apologize with the camera fighting through the flu right now, so I'm a sight for sore eyes, so. Let me keep the camera off and don't hold it against me, please. So I will bring up the plane. And Peter gave a good history, but I'll just. Fill in some some gaps there and I'll try and be brief and I've had a long meeting so far, but effectively. We started the process back in March of this year, went to a couple of zoning board meetings, got an approval for a special permit for the use. We then went to the planning board for a couple of meetings at the end of the second meeting. We generally agreed that we should wait for the Conservation Commission to see what happened with the order of conditions and stormwater permit that we had before them. So we went to the Conservation Commission for a couple of months, ended up getting the order of conditions and the stormwater permit approved. Then we re applied back to the planning board with those updated plans. At which point we were then referred to the Design Review Board, went to the Design Review Board for a couple of meetings and. And now back before you tonight. The plan changes are. There haven't been a ton of plan changes since the last the planning board has seen, so I'll just run through what those are. And I'll just actually reorient you to to what's going on here, but again, effectively, we're adding. This island in a second order point. And the intention is to improve the drive through ordering process to help reduce customer wait times. And to shorten the drive through stack that would otherwise be going back to Pond Street. Which also helps reduce idling onsite of vehicles. As part of that, we removed a handful of parking spaces that are head in against this residential butter. We've added a fence, six foot vinyl fence, and we've added rows of arborvitae as well as some lower plantings to create a a screen. For that a butter where where one doesn't even exist today, so I think that's a huge benefit to that that a butter there. The changes that have happened since the the planning board has seen this last, we restripped these parking stalls to be diagonal. Where they were at ninety degrees before, that was just, I believe, a peer review comment. We changed the fence color per Design Review Committee's request to a gray tone rather than white. We replaced a stop sign, there's an existing stop sign here that is. Under existing conditions, too small and mounted too low, so we're going to bring that into compliance, we're going to raise it up and. Provide a a much larger stop sign per code for regulation. And then we added more buffering plantings per Design Review Committee's request. So at this point, the applicant, in talking with them, we we believe. They've accommodated probably ninety five percent of all the peer review comments, zoning, conservation, designer view and planning. This is the plan that they've come before the the board with tonight and hoping for a vote. Again, we believe the special permit is definitely warranted, and we believe this is an overall benefit to the, not just McDonald's, but the overall community. As again, we're reducing parking and adding buffer for this residential neighbor, improving the queuing. That would otherwise potentially could go back to Pond Streets or removing any of those issues by improving that drive through. We're increasing green space on the property and we're improving stormwater management through the stormwater management permit and order of conditions. So that's that's the history and where we're at, and again, we respectfully request the board consider voting tonight if possible. But I will turn it back to Madam Chair to make those decisions, thank you.
Thanks, I'm I'm just looking at looking at a few things. And and granted, this is the first time the planning board has seen this in a while, so I. I cannot guarantee that we will get there tonight, especially when we haven't received. We didn't get the Design Review Committee comments. I got them a little bit, a little bit ago when I asked for them, but they, I don't think they had been distributed to the board. So we just want to make sure all all those things are clear, but I think with your work with the Design Review Committee, I assume we're getting. Pretty close, as I as I look at those comments. And just to make sure, because I believe I I saw a meeting where some of these things were talked about, one is about a bike rack. I remember hearing some discussions about where that might go, did that land somewhere or was that unable to find a home?
So that was one of the the few items that the applicant. Once we left the final Design Review Committee meeting, the applicant more or less said we're, we can't accommodate any more changes and and added budget. So it kind of just snapped the chalk line on that, so it is not currently proposed a bike rack right now.
Okay.
If there were one to be placed, it would probably be best at this front right corner.
Okay. And then. So the fence, the fence is in in the area of the green, is that right?
That's that is correct, I can draw it in here, it's effectively, oops, oh yeah, it's it spans this whole length of green.
Okay, so it's the fence and then and then the trees and then the lower shrubs.
Correct, arborvitae and then some like rhododendron mid mid height type of plantings along the face.
And what is your, what's the final parking count? I believe you needed twenty nine, but you. You started out with, you started out with some, you you gave up some for greater accessibility, greater. Easier navigation and for green space.
That's correct, yeah, so we started with fifty five existing and we've got forty proposed, so we're reducing fifteen total parking spaces. The the minimum requirement is twenty nine that you're referencing.
Okay, and then the, I think the last comment. I think I have on here is the hiding of the dumpster, was that part of the things that were. Able to be included or was that eliminated?
So we are replacing the dumpster per peer review comments, the dumpster is still current, or the enclosure fencing is at six feet.
And does that hide then, will that hide the new dumpster or is the the dumpster still visible despite the?
I think depending on where you you look, if you go up the street and look down, you'll certainly see it. But I I can't guarantee. That you will won't be able to see it, and all I can say is six feet is very typical of any commercial use. Eight feet might require variance, which the applicant's not. It's just they can't withstand the financially withstand, this is the local business owner, not not McDonald's corporate, so they're just. Running out of of available budget to to keep going through these processes.
So is anything happening, I mean, can you just describe what changes, if any, that are having, happening around that dumpster? Do you say you're replacing the dumpster or replacing the fence or?
Sure, yeah, so, yeah, so the existing enclosure located here. In the peer review comment letter, it was suggested that it was outside of the property at some point, I don't know if there was a taking or an easement. So as part of the peer review comment request, we relocated the dumpster enclosure onto the property. Or proposing a twenty eight foot wide by twenty twelve foot deep, six foot high fence enclosure. So it'll be fully enclosed with a a Trex material fencing.
And the dumpsters, how high?
They vary, I I I don't know the. Exact height of the dumpster.
Okay, I just wanted to go through those items, I'm going to open it up to the to the planning board for questions.
So I I went to the site and my two concerns were the stop sign and the and the. The cover for the trash, so if if the dumpster is fully fully. Not visible and that stop sign is being addressed, those, I'm I'm satisfied with what I'm hearing.
I I would add that, so what I'm hearing is that the all the comments from the the San Review Committee. Were addressed with the exception of that bike rack, is that correct?
I don't, but there may be more, sorry, this is Eric again.
Can you comment what what which were not able to be addressed? So we know.
Sure, yeah, I just want to, there's a lot discussed at the meeting, but the actual report in the letter that was issued was distilled down, so I'm just. Kind of going through that that letter myself right now, so. Comment number one, I'll just read through it if that's the best way to do this right now. Comment number one, you know, I could probably even bring this right up on the screen if that works.
Yep, this is the document that I have for the rest of the planning board.
So, okay, the stop sign, so we we addressed the stop sign issue by replacing that for keeping the no left turn sign. So I would say comment number one is addressed. Item number two is about fencing. I believe this comment distills down that they actually wanted the fence the full length of the property. Which we're not able to accommodate because the curb line is right on the property line. So to do this, we need to shift all of the parking and curving, it would come at significant expense. And I don't know that adds any significant benefit to that a butter. As we've already kind of buffered the 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 area that would be impactful for them. So we did address the additional buffer plantings that they requested. So I think we got half of this second comment. Item two B, use the same fencing product for both dumpster and north border fence, match colors. So I believe we've accommodated that. Two C, the fence should minimally match the height of the dumpster, if not extend twelve inches above. Again, we're proposing a six foot high fence there. I can't comment on whether you're going to be able to see it, depending where you're at, how high you're looking from it, if you're up the street, down the street. All I can say is the operators committed to replacing the dumpster with the twelve, I'm sorry, the six foot fence, which is pretty typical for all commercial uses. So I don't know if we've fully addressed this comment, it's a little bit difficult to. Definitely say that again from, depends where you're standing and where you're looking down from. Believe this comment is essentially saying they'd like to remove more parking than we've already to accommodate more plantings. Believe this comment is essentially saying they'd like to remove more parking than we've already to accommodate more plantings and enhance the overall landscaping. Again, we've done approximate to our, our work area, we've landscaped as much as we can. Sure, the designer review committee would probably not be satisfied that that's met, but we've done, I think, what we can.
Yeah, I think, I think they're quoting by law there. Relative to, would be relative to new construction.
Right. And then the bike rack, which we discussed.
Okay, so, so, so if, if those are the questions and, and, and seeing the extent that, that, the, the things that have been satisfied. I, I personally think that we've seen this, this project and, and, and I am, I, I am comfortable with the plan as is. And, and I would be, I, I would be willing to vote on it, I, I don't think that we're going to be able to to drag this to a different, very significant different outcome. That's my, my two cents.
Did we have an update from the October sixth GCG comments? Because on October, the last one I found was October sixth, and there were open issues, and it doesn't mean they're not closed, but there were quite a few in that October sixth letter.
I believe there was a December fifth one that I don't remember, know where I got my, I don't know if it was attached to Peter's email or if I got it right from the website, but it was one of those two locations.
And there were no open issues, can we pull that one up then? And make sure there's no issues?
I think there's, there's issues on there that are that need to be looked at by the planning board, I, I think, so I'm not sure there's I, I wouldn't say there's no open issue, it's not like there's resolved on everything. But there's things that are in our purview to make a decision on.
Can we pull that up and walk through those?
I'm happy to, yeah. I have a Eric, would you like to pull up the, the Bowler letter from December fifth, or would you like myself to do?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think kind of the overall comment from Bowler on this is that we feel like we've addressed these as far as we can, there's a lot of reoccurring consistent comments about existing conditions that have existed for tens of years that, you know, we just don't have a ton of control over being an existing site, it's not a new, a new development site, so, you know, parking spaces that you know, certain angles or, or depths that have just been there forever, we just can't accommodate it without drastically changing the wrong site.
So my question there, Peter, like this is an existing condition, these parking spaces, right? Is that something that requires a, a waiver in our site plan review or this?
No. Not, not in my eyes, you know, I think if they were going to if any of the proposed work was, you know, going to manipulate the existing, I would say yes, but none of the proposed work will touch upon those, so you know, they are existing, it is a fully developed site, and they're just, the, the site plan is, is a the site plan a special permit is just a modification to that.
Okay.
Just want to run through this one by one real quick.
Yeah, I think that's just kind of
My understanding is this is the outstanding comment, so this is the, the final letter from peer review, we essentially their initial comment is at the top, and then in blue is their follow-up. Their second response, and then below is our response to, to their stuff in blue. I think comment one is effectively saying that we don't, not all spaces are twenty, twenty feet by nine per standard parking spaces. There are some existing non-conforming spaces and that would require the board approval. So our response is that we've done our best to accommodate the twenty by nine, and there are some, still some spaces that we just can't, can't quite get there, but they, they currently exist and we're not aware of any issues with those spaces being that way today.
Okay.
So that's that comment. Note sheet, nothing, demolition sheet, resolved, resolved, resolved. So, resolved. So this is site layout plan comments. Don't know if I ever fully understood here, but we, we, we added a sign to to effectively direct traffic to use Nickerson Road for left turn onto Pond Street to help push people away from making a left hand out onto Pond, that's not, not legal to do. So I guess they're just saying board approval required for, for that.
For, Peter, for an additional sign?
I don't think we need, you know, I think it's, I think what the applicant is doing is they're helping, they're adding additional signage to help traffic flow on the side.
Yeah, because you're not allowed to make that left turn now.
Correct, you're not allowed to do it now, and you will not be in the future, we confirm that with Mass D O T. Project, so if you were to take a left turn out of the site, you would be going back around and then using that entrance. And the ingress off of by Nickerson to get to that position on Pond Street.
And the Pond Street, the Pond Street curb cups are already labeled no left turn. Right.
And that sign will be, there was a sign, and that sign will be the place after the, the completion of the road there. When that was confirmed in the email with the area with Mass D O T area representatives.
Okay.
So comment two is effectively what Peter's talking about, the no left turns and keep right signs, so those signs have been added to the plan, so that is resolved. Zoning analysis table resolves. They're asking to add a handicap accessible sign in front of the thirty eighty A space. We added that in, that was just an oversight. So that's been added to the plan, so I would assume that's going to be resolved once they review this letter. Resolved. I think this generally distills down to that there's some existing non-conforming stalls, angles, and again, concern whether or not it, it works, but again, the site's been functioning fine for many, many years, so that continues to be our responses that we're, we've done our best, but yeah, some of these are just going to exist the way they do. Relative to the parking spaces. I think there's some question about the queuing spaces that we're providing on the drive-through queue, we're effectively I don't even know that we, we just acknowledged their comment, but effectively they just said the queuing lanes as shown meets the requirements. GCG recommends additional signage and or pavement marking to discourage queuing vehicles blocking Pond Street ingress intersection. We're not addressing this, I don't think additional striping at the throat of the driveway coming in is going to prevent any of that, and I think it's going to be confusing. So respectfully decline to add any additional striping or pavement markings to to discourage queuing vehicles blocking Pond Street, I just, I just don't think it will be effective, and I don't think that's going to be a normal operating condition anyhow, based on the intent of the product is to, to stop that from happening.
Yeah, that there, you're adding additional queuing space, so I mean, granted, there could be more traffic, anything can cause more traffic, but there's more queuing space now than there was.
Significantly, correct.
So, okay.
Show off-street loading space. So we've shown a loading space that conflicts with parking, McDonald's loads off peak hours and they have full control when delivery trucks come, so obviously they, they do it at a time when it's not going to conflict with their business or create any, any, you know, customer conflicts, so I think CGC is just acknowledging that that's an unusual thing to do, which and just pointing to the board that we should take a look at it. Could bring the plan up to show you where that's happening.
Eric, and that's, that, that's been, that's been the model of McDonald's.
Yeah, yep, that's what they've
I think Duncan Jonas does the same thing, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah, and McDonald's is very unique where they actually control this distribution, not, not many other similar companies actually have any control when their deliveries come, they can say, okay, come between, you know, four and eight. But McDonald's can specifically pick a time because they own the distribution, so it's they have a huge amount of control, and obviously, that, that's helpful to make sure they're not coming when when it would be disruptive to their business. So there's a, a yield, there's a crosswalk coming from the ADA stalls across, we added a yield to pedestrian sign. It's a, it's one that sits in the, the crosswalk, just based on there not being a great place to put a pole-mounted pole-mounted yield sign, so I think CGC is pointing out that it's not per MUTCD standards, but this is a, a private site, so we're just respectfully asking to keep the movable base yield pedestrian sign. Because it doesn't otherwise work.
Can you show us where that is?
So we're placing it here, and I can show you the detail, but it's effectively like almost like a sandwich board, if you will, if you could picture like in the roadways, sometimes they have those to kind of alert traffic to, to crosswalks. And the detail is here, so that, that's what that comment is saying, that that's not for MUTCD standards, I guess. Let's see. Asked for the crosswalk to be six feet wide, which we, we did, so we widened that crosswalk to six feet per their recommendation. They asked the existing Pond Street Egress no left turn sign to call that out, so we've done that on the plans. Nothing on these statements. They asked us to provide the, oh, and the operation and maintenance plan for the storm water, that was reviewed and approved through a conservation commission, so we enclosed that with our recent middle. So you'll have that, or you should have that, but effectively, again, that was all conservation reviewed and approved documents. They're suggesting the non-conforming buffer and interior plantings need, but the existing non-conforming, they need board approval, I think that would just be through the special permit. So they're just pointing that out. Crosswalk detail. A lot of technical stuff about the crosswalk, and it not meeting MUTCD standards. Again, it's a private, private site, it's a typical crosswalk six feet wide. So we're comfortable with what we're proposing.
What is MUTCD?
It's effectively like
Municipal Uniform Transportation.
Thank you very much.
But, but considering that the, the Massachusetts Access Board requires only thirty-six inches for any accessible route and, and all sites and buildings, having six feet seems plenty to me.
Yeah, again, so we, we gave them, we were at five feet, we didn't have an issue going six feet, so I think it's a non-issue, but it just keeps resurfacing. Existing non-conforming spaces need board approval, it's kind of a consistent discussion we keep having. Again, existing non-conforming stall and aisle with board approval required, very consistent issue with the existing spaces. Resolved, resolved, so that's the end of the, the comments.
I would say the only question I have in that, because I agree, and we, we've talked about this, you know, earlier this evening even that there is a balance between there's a balance between what can be demanded and what can actually happen, especially when a business is existing, right, and at what level of improvement, you know, is, is possible when you consider a business owner. But I am wondering about the, the, the simple thing with the sign, the temp, the movable sign versus it, doesn't it seem like a sign on a post would take up less space than a sign with a base? So I wasn't sure about that, like
Yeah, it's just the issue of placing it, there's no great spot for a a sign on a pole because you've got pedestrians kind of walking through this area, so we're just nervous about people hitting their heads and faces. And it just
Or is it the more flexible sign, is that what you're saying, like the, the movable one, you're not going to get hurt if you run into it because it's more flexible?
Right, yeah, that would be kind of waist, waist level, rather than something being up towards your head, again, just a lot of customers are going to be walking walking through this route, and it's just, if there was a landscape island or some better spot, we definitely would do that, but we just don't have that flexibility, so we thought that was the best, best solution.
You may have a sightline issue there, went around the corner of the building for the vehicles leaving the drive-through anyways. I think the one in the road might have their attention better.
Great.
Kathy, do you have a, a comment you'd like to make, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do, thanks. What's the what's the actual special permit? It says special permit, design plan review, site plan review.
That's on you.
Yeah, so it's, it's for the, it's for the digital menu boards that they're proposing at the drive-through.
Okay, so, I know when the applicant came to us that that, what, what you're seeing in that plan was pretty much, not totally, but pretty much what we saw before. And I think it was Kevin Moat, who actually brought up the number of parking spaces and started discussing the idea of eliminating all the parking spaces on that north side of the lot. Extending that fence, which then would mean you could extend that fence line to go farther, because we thought the location of the menu board was still going to impact the back of that next door neighbor's property, and then there's a whole corner there that's that's really large, if you don't need it for the turning line radius, and we saw one of those, and we saw parking spaces even with people backing out, if you've eliminated all those parking spaces on its side, you could turn that into a nice green buffer zone area, and you could put some picnic tables out there, and in the nice weather, people could actually potentially, since it would be nicely landscaped out there, sit out and eat a meal out there instead of in their cars or driving along. I think that when we're asking for the fence to be the height of, to be above the height of whatever the dumpster is, it's from the parking lot, it's not from up above. Pretty much sadly, the guy who operates the business up above there, the storage rental and truck rental business, they know they're looking down at a dumpster.
They might have to deal, but
Yeah, you know, they'll have to deal, they've been dealing with it on the property for years, so, you know, I mean, it's an improvement, I'm sure, as far as he's concerned. And I, I think that we, we did, we did explain to the applicant about the incredible amount of time that the town boards, the town staff, a whole bunch of volunteers who worked on the Pond Street plans and revisions and the thousand and one public meetings about them, to say nothing of all the public that participated. A lot of time, effort and money has gone into making Pond Street get spruced up. And we think that a, a national corporation a a national corporation on the Fortune five hundred list should should step it up a little and help out. Even though we recognize that, yes, there's a franchisees here, a local franchisee here, but we think that the the McDonald's corporate should step it up and add additional landscaping to the front of the property and certainly do more on that north side. We can't figure out wh- what they're going to do with all those parking spaces there. We think much better use of putting them for additional plantings. And then the bike rack breaking the budget, you know, I don't even know what to say. I think that's I'm I'm certain that when we start making one twenty six more bikeable, which we're well on the way to doing, that there's a large potential for kids on bikes in particular to be there. And what are they going to do with their bikes? Where are they going to put them? And if there isn't a bike rack, they'll just dump them all over the place anywhere on the ground. There's no place for them to put them right now. So I think those are the the comments from the from the design review committee, and I think we're really disappointed right now. I'm I, you know, at what we're seeing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning board?
Um, screening, when you look at it, the digital words go like right. Maybe if you're in the front of the house looking over, it covers the angle, but in the backyard, it doesn't. Because the they're past the landscaping. Whereas in a proposed digital menu board, you draw a line across, you do not hit the landscaping.
You do not hit the landscaping.
So I guess if you're, so you look at the proposed digital menu board, your cursor there and then go over to the right.
Right. So you're saying the the view to McDonald's is not, or the menu board is not blocked from someone being in the backyard.
Well, on their own property and you are making a substantial change there.
Yeah. But any more comments, Kate, before I see if anyone else has, I don't want to cut you off.
I I feel like a dumpster screen should screen the dumpster. So I think, or don't have it. Cause it just seems like folly to partially cover it.
I assume you're not meaning from above as well. From the windows.
I don't want to split hair with semantics, but right now you can go to McDonald's and you can see the dumpsters. If I stand in their parking lot. Dumpster sticking out above the fence.
Yeah, I, we we have added that member to our general conditions. I'm talking about like Kathy had mentioned, actually, people being able to look down on dumpsters from from windows. And I want to be clear about what you're saying.
No, I'm staying at grade. If you're standing there, the dumpster should not be sticking above the screen.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Uh, any other comments from the planning board? All right. Anna, anything? I mean, I'll just jump in about the parking. Like I I don't think I understand and I appreciate wanting to remove parking, add green space. I think reducing the parking in this parking lot by fifteen spaces already is is good for me to asking them to take out a whole line of parking in a commercial area.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was gonna, I was gonna say the same, Tricia. I I agree. And 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 I I think it's not in the nature of McDonald's business where people actually go and sit on on benches. I I really don't see it happening. I think the drive through really is what the business in the future is going to be more than anything.
Yeah, so. You know, I think for the scale of the project of the proposal, and that's what, to me, some of this is about. What is the change being proposed and our evaluation of the project being in proportion to the proposed change? And for me, I think that, and and you know, obviously we should follow up on on the things that and make sure they're in our conditions, things that are mentioned. But I think, I think that has been done, that the proportion is is appropriate. And and I I'm ready to move forward on this. Obviously, we would have to review conditions when we get them, make sure they are in agreement with what you know, go through them in the same in in the same manner that we do other projects. But I do want to hear, there's several members of the board who haven't commented, and this is an opportunity to do so if you want one, if you're, otherwise we can. Otherwise, if someone is ready, we can.
I can quickly say, I would kind of agree that on the screening of the dumpster, that fence should be tall enough. I mean, it looks like you have more than a six foot dumpster there now. So maybe that's just writing that as a condition that, you know, they can probably just order a shorter dumpster, honestly. And then I'm looking at the, you know, Google Street View right now, and you can drive around McDonald's parking lot. There's no screening at all to that neighbor's house right now. I think concern with the menu board is that at nighttime, they're bright enough that they could be a nuisance. So where are you at nighttime inside your house? And and we're screening the house significantly, especially compared to what was there. So I think it's a a great improvement for the neighbor. It's obviously not perfect, but I I I don't think we can ask franchisee to completely rebuild the parking lot just to try to, you know, something that really helped the town by keeping the traffic from backing up onto one twenty six.
Thanks, Kevin. And Anna, did you have any comments or good?
No, I I, I mean, my, like I said before, my my two concerns with the dumpster and the stop sign, the stop sign, I feel like has been addressed. The dumpster, I would just want to put in decision that it will be tall enough to cover it. In our, but I, but I do think we're ready to start writing this thing.
Yeah, in in our last decision, which I guess maybe, yeah, yikes, you weren't a part of. We did, I I put, I moved, Kate had made a comment about the dumpsters and I made sure that was now part of our general conditions so that it it is part of every project, so that the owner will be responsible for comparing and contrasting the height of his enclosure and the height of his dumpster and making sure that it is fully hidden. So that that should be just true for any project. So it's now in the general conditions. And we'll show up in this one as well.
That makes total sense.
Can we make a motion to to move forward and 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 approve this and start writing the conditions?
Give it a shot, Marcelo.
What is the address again? I forget.
Two twenty five pond.
I'm I I make a motion to to approve the site plan review and special permit for two twenty five Pond Street proposed project.
Say contingent upon the conditions that will.
Yeah, continues upon the conditions that have been discussed today.
All right, and roll call vote. Let's start with you.
Marcelo, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So that has passed. We will, of course, be redoing, revealing the conditions. Obviously, before making sure they are uh, reading appropriately before we before we sign any approvals. So Peter, I assume you will be on that over your relaxing vacation.
And we'll be. Uh, no, actually, I I I I I'm not jumping gun, but I have started to sketch something out. And so I'm happy to kind of start circulating that in the next couple of days and continue on.
Everybody for working through that tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Hope you're feeling better.
Thank you.
All right. Next item on our agenda are the three, thirty four Albert Ray Drive. It's the three special permits. We will look at them together. AT&amp;T Mobility, the Dish Wireless and the Verizon Wireless. Note that. That Peter did change the wording on there because the the dish wireless is just adding on and not subtracting and adding. So he just wanted to make sure that that was properly reflected. So the last questions on this were to make sure that all of the butters, both Ashland and Framingham had been properly notified of the meeting tonight. The senators, do you have anything you want to add before I open it up to any public comment? If there are any of those butters, maybe perhaps here today?
Um, no, we got that a butters list over to you guys at the beginning of last week and it went right out. So I appreciate you hearing us again tonight.
Jump in, just to jump in, it was a week ago that the butter notification went out to both Framingham and Ashland residents um, of the proposed, uh, of the meeting tonight. So I just want to make note that of the public.
Are there any questions or comments from the planning board before I open it up to general comments? Then I'm opening it up to any public comments. So if you'd like to speak, get your hand in the air quickly. As I become restless at the end of the evening. Truth be told.
I don't know why.
I love these long nights. All right, seeing seeing none. I will make a motion to approve the thirty four Albert Ray Drive special permit for AT&amp;T Mobility, for Dish Wireless and for Verizon Wireless.
I'll second.
All right, and roll call vote.
Anna Tesmeniski, I.
Marcelo, I.
Captain Jersey, I.
McLean, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So that passes. Thank you for hanging around and for such a short time.
Oh, no. Oh, yeah, it's no problem. I appreciate you fitting me in this before January. I know the first question Crown is going to ask me tomorrow morning is when we can expect a written decision. So what's your, what what's your typical timeline look like?
A decision like this, Peter, is kind of different than what we usually do.
You know, I'm gonna, I got a lot going on, but I will, I will, it's on my to-do list and I would say, you know, within two weeks typically.
Okay.
I'll be able to kind of get that down.
Okay, that's perfect. That's all I needed to know. Thank you guys so much again. I appreciate all the help.
On on how it goes down, how everything kind of moves forward.
Okay, can I just, can I just get a clarification? Do we, on the, on the agenda, the thirty four Albert Ray is listed three times. Do we need to do this motion three times?
Oh, good question.
Procedurally, sure, we can do it. The three separate.
I I just want to make sure that we follow the rules, so.
It's no problem. I I I, I think procedurally, from my standpoint, yes, I think it makes sense to say three different motions is three different votes, not to. I don't want to see any longer anybody else, but you know, if if that makes every, it's probably, it's probably the correct way. You know.
Yeah, let's follow the correct way. I know that's annoying and we're running out of time, but are are out of our sane time.
There's never the wrong time to do it.
Yeah, but I I I think just for the sake of.
Procedure.
Yeah, and.
I agree a hundred percent.
Motion that we accept the thirty four Albert Ray Drive special permit for Verizon Wireless.
And a roll call vote.
Anna Tesmeniski, I.
Marcelo, I.
Catherine Jersey, I.
Kevin McLean, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. Kate, next.
I make a motion that we accept thirty four Albert Ray Drive special for Dish Wireless LLC.
I'll second that.
And a roll call vote.
Anna Tesmeniski, I.
Marcelo, I.
Catherine Jersey, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. One more time.
All right. I make a motion that we accept thirty four Albert Ray Drive special permit for AT&amp;T Mobility.
I'll second that. Anna Tesmeniski, I.
Marcelo, I.
Catherine Jersey, I.
Kevin McLean, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. Tricia Kendall, I. That all passes and now we can, now we can move on.
Thank you again, you guys. Have a great night.
I also make a special note to everybody. At our next meeting, we're going to have one more of these and it's going to be for the fourth network that's the the one other existing network that's already on the site and Kate was not the lucky.
That's not me.
Peter, we've been through this twice with this with Katie, but also the prior applicant on the same issue. Can we make sure this next applicant gets the public notice done right?
Yeah.
Since I now have the butters list and it's within the ninety days, we're going to take.
Yeah, I think we're going to dispatch it in one meeting.
Yeah, and make sure, and make sure the five G is listed on the announcement.
Yes, please.
And on the agenda. Okay.
Have a good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye bye.
You too. All right, so we need to just go through. Peter, what do we do about the next one? They've requested to withdraw. Do we have to accept the withdrawal?
We have to request to accept the withdrawal.
We have to. We just have to accept the withdrawal.
Correct.
Okay.
Their emotion? Do we need to make a motion to do it? Okay. Is there some discussion we're supposed to have or is this pretty standard?
For a withdraw, I think it's very fairly standard.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept the withdrawal of the preliminary subdivision application relative to three oh one Pond Street Edens and Wind Development. Although, although, wait. Am I, am I direct to butter on that one?
You're a direct to butter, so I think.
All right, so I just said.
I'll I'll make the motion to to accept the withdrawal of their applications with three oh one Pond Street.
Second.
And a roll call vote not starting with Anna.
Captain Jersey, I.
McLean, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So that passes four zero zero. Um, the next one is requested a continuance to March ninth. And just, just to be clear about these, these have been put in here to basically both of these next two to free zoning. In case there is an appeal to these projects, right?
That is correct.
So there's covering, there's covering their bases.
Covering the bases, exactly. And so Angela Coforti here, tonight is on the call from F R E. Which is a pretty building. Hello, Angela.
Good evening.
Free board members, please introduce to Angela Coforti. It's fairly, it's been a.
Do you want me to step out? It sounds like there might be some discussion on five oh one pond. Do you want me to just come back, Peter?
It's a continuance. I don't believe, there's going to be no, there's no discussion on it. But here, F R E who who is the current landowner is looking for a continuance on the submitted preliminary subdivision to March ninth. I I don't believe there's any discussion. If there is, please, please do, but we just have to vote to accept the continuing.
All right. Unless there's comments from the planning board, I will make a motion to accept the continuance to March ninth of the five oh one Pond Street preliminary subdivision.
A second.
Roll call vote.
Marcelo, I.
Catherine Jersey, I.
Kevin McLean, I.
And Tricia Kendall, I. So that is continued until March ninth. The next one. Is anyone here representing the next one, Peter?
Angela, yeah, again, is the representing the property owner. Who is, excuse me, at this one, it is, it's the fabric company under, I believe, Chestnut Realty.
Ashland Chestnut Realty.
Chestnut Realty, excuse me. But with that said, Angela, please correct me if I'm wrong. For this case, you are looking for a continuance until January twelfth, two thousand and twenty three.
January twenty third?
Twenty third.
I thought it was the twenty sixth, which is Thursday.
On my end.
Was the March ninth, was that correct as far as a Thursday?
It was March ninth, correct.
Okay.
Yep, I'm looking at it. I have the sheet in front of me right now.
All right, if there's no comments, I will I'll make a motion to accept the continuance to. I'll make a motion to accept the continuance to January twenty-third, January twenty-sixth. Twenty twenty-three for the Village of America's Phase Eight Preliminary Subdivision.
I'll second it.
And roll call vote?
Anna Tesmaniski, aye.
Myself, I'm a aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
I'm a clean eye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. All right. This one is not continued, so this is the. Uh, item J.
Is Village at Clocktown, item J, preliminary subdivision, um, fifty-eight Exchange Ashland LLC. And for this one, we are going to have to open the public hearing. So if, uh, if you give me a minute, I can, uh, I'll pull up the.
I got it, Peter.
Okay.
Uh, the Ashland Planning Board will hold a public hearing to hear the petition of fifty-eight Exchange Ashland LLC and Ashland Chestnut Realty. Requesting a preliminary subdivision plan approval per chapter forty-one, section eighty-one K through eighty-one G G. Of the Massachusetts General Law and Chapter three forty-four subdivision of land of the Ashland bylaws. The applicant is seeking to create two buildable lots and three hundred thirty-six feet of proposed roadway. The property in question is identified as twelve Union Street, sixteen Union Street, and one East Union Street. Assessor's map, fifteen lot seventy-six, seventy-seven, seventy-eight, and the Wildwood Mixed Use Special District. Just a, so that's open, so, um, just a question about the. Properties in question is identified as. How does the street addresses work there? The, that's just, um, they're blank sites, but. Twelve Union Street, sixteen Union Street, one East Union Street, are those just?
I think those were, uh, Angela Conforti here for, um, for the fabric companies for fifty-eight Exchange Ashland LLC. Those addresses may have carried over from former assessors' parcel numbers now that the, uh, Public Safety Building is. That, that parcel's been created. I think the assessor may have updated the, uh, records since then, but tho- those were. You know, historically, the addresses that were used for the property before the Public Safety Facility was, um, parceled out.
And it doesn't, and these numbers won't include the Public Safety Building. It would include just the remaining land?
Uh, I'd have to check the assessor's map, but.
Okay, I, I was curious, um. We have the, uh, obviously the documentation on it, the, the map. All right, so, um. Did, did you want to just describe what is happening on this site?
Right, so in all honesty, it's same intent as the other two we just discussed for a different purpose. It's to freeze the zoning, um. In order to, uh, a- avoid the application of the. Um, town meeting warrant that was passed, uh, la- last month or a couple months ago. On the multifamily, um, unit, so it's really just a plan to freeze the zoning.
So, and Peter, th- this doesn't mean that, um. Multifamily housing can be proposed and built on this site during the housing moratorium. It just gives, it means that if the zoning should change. During that time, they are freezing their zoning the way it is, at the, at the end of the two years. They could proceed with multifamily housing. Is that, is that right?
No, so what they're trying to, what they're doing here is they're locking in the zoning to the date that they filed. But the date they filed is actually, this application is stamped in on, um, November sixteenth, and so. When the, the, the building moratorium bylaw will be added to our bylaws upon attorney general approval. However, what this is doing in theory is, um. If this plan, within seven months is followed up with a preliminary, uh, excuse me, the definitive subdivision. That this definitive subdivision is approved, then the re- the, the zoning in play at the time. The preliminary subdivision, um, was filed, stands as the, as the applicable zoning. It said therefore, within the next two years, if the applicant steps forward with a plan and it is approved. Within two years, then they would not be subject to the building moratorium.
So.
Yeah.
Building permits can be issued within those two years. Right.
But it wa- it with this plan. Because it's freezing zoning on November sixteen. Um. Would it, would, would exempt them from that bylaw? Because it's a bylaw, zoning bylaw affecting this property in question. And this preliminary subdivision is outlining the locus of the property.
So. So typically, the purpose of a preliminary subdivision document is to establish subdivision.
Correct.
Um, what is the subdivision we're attempting to establish? Can we focus on that for a moment? I understand the purpose of it was to essentially get around the building moratorium. I'd like to understand what is the subdivision, and is that even a proper application for a subdivision on frontage of this street? Um, so can we go back to that just for a second? Um, and, and then, once we understand what the subdivision is, we can revisit this idea that it's sort of a procedural. Tool, because I'm not, I'm not really cl- clear on whether this is even a proper subdivision document to begin with, so. What are, what is the subdivision that you're trying to identify, and how exactly does it relate to the school building? That was not very clear to me at all.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so the school building was something that was in the front. But this subdivision, obviously, I'm gonna, Angela and, and Bob, and then Bob Paxton, and then the site civil. And Jamie, and, and Bob, and you care to try to answer that question?
I, I'm not really sure I understand the question. It's, um, it's just, it's a subdivision road and two lots. It's just creating two lots with frontage on, on the subdivision road. The, the, uh, it's probably never going to get built out. Like I said, the intent is for this plan to simply freeze the zoning.
Okay, the, so probably never going to be built. File to freeze the zoning. I am troubled by that. Uh, if there is nothing that's going to be built there, and it's just being used to freeze the zoning. I'm going to need a little bit more understanding of how this is a proper mechanism to freeze zoning to avoid a building moratorium.
This is, this is the mechanism that's provided under subdivision control law to freeze the zoning. Is the filing of a preliminary plan, and then within seven months, the filing of a definitive plan. Which, uh, upon the approval freezes the zoning for eight years.
So what was the date of the application for this particular item?
Um. It was the.
November eighth.
Bob, do you have that information in front of?
The, the.
Uh, Bob Paxton from Gary, Aaron Helen.
Yes, I, the application was submitted on November eighth.
It was stamped in with the town clerk on November sixteenth, because I first, please note, had to reject the application for updating. For out-of-date a butters list. And so on the sixteenth, I received updated the butters list, and then the file was stamped in with the town.
And the building moratorium passed on what date?
The sixteenth, uh, which was at night. The vote took place, uh, past seven o'clock. The application was stamped in at eleven fifteen.
Eleven fifteen AM, the same day?
Yeah, AM, yeah, same day. I was on, I was actually out of the office that, I believe, Tuesday, Monday, and Tuesday. Um, indoor Monday was a holiday, I believe, and I think I bet they are. And the applicant, the prior week I was in touch with the applicant, uh, because I was. Uh, I was, I screened all applications, all preliminary subdivision applications. For the fine due toll, and the application, uh, submitted an out-of-date butters list. A butters list is only good legally for ninety days. It was outside of the ninety days. And so therefore, the new a butters list was requested. That was provided for me, uh, then I stamped it in as appropriate.
So I have questions similar to I sent Peter, and I, I would like it, I think we should bring it up on the screen, how. This particular parcel qualifies for subdivision. Um, because it, there's a definition in Mass General Law, the even L section, which is also is very similar to our language that. I think it's very clear English saying if it has frontage on a public road. For the purpose of this law of subdivision, it's not to be counted. So obviously, a subdivision of subdividing land is a request. But if we're using the state law of subdivision, I think we have to be very careful and make sure this qualifies. And I, my read, I am not a land use lawyer, I'm not a lawyer. But I do know English pretty well, so I think if Peter brings that up, you, you would have to, um, see, I think it's very clear. I'm, I'm not sure what language you're referring to that would indicate that you can't subdivide a parcel that already has legal frontage. Is that what you're saying? Um, I can, I can send it to the board, go to my sent email, but I think Peter has it, he could bring it up.
I'm just getting to my email, see.
And while we're, while that's coming up, I, I also have concerns about, like. It's shown as one parcel to be divided. But yet it's assessors' records for three lots. I, I'm very confused about that. It, it doesn't. I, I, I tried to get the assessors' records, but I was like, I don't even know why, if you're saying it's one lot now, and I'd like to subdivide it, but it's referring to three parcels. So sometimes, oh, I, I don't know what the assessors' records, uh, are reflecting right now, but sometimes it does take the assessor. Some time to catch up with the plans of record. So it's one lot as shown on the recorded plan, but it might not be one lot in the assessors' records. That's all I can say, without having looked at the assessors' records recently.
The, the standard process when we do subdivision that I recall at our hearings is we have a visual of what we're looking at. So I, I think in light of the fact that you're trying to file this to essentially maneuver around our bylaw, or excuse me, our town meeting. I think you can give it some time and get some proper records in front of us, and show us exactly how this is a proper subdivision.
Um, I, I don't have the plan with me, but, um, if Peter or, or somebody. Peter, if you could share your screen and show the board.
I can, I can share the screen as well. I, I'm currently sharing the screen.
Yeah, let's, let's read through this first.
Um.
Okay, so all this is saying is that the lots in the subdivision must have frontage on a public way. Well. It's saying it can't be used, the subdivision law does not apply if they have frontage on a public way.
Yeah, so you're saying, Kate, that, um. That there's an exception here that says. Um. The vision of attractive land into two or more lots shall not be deemed to constitute a subdivision. Within the meaning of the subdivision control, if at the time when it was made, every lot within the tract so divided. Has frontage on a public way. Or on a way which the clerk or the city of town certifies is maintained and uses a public way, so. In this case, that's, what you're saying, Kate, is it's being divided into two lots, and both of those lots. Have frontage on a public way.
I, I believe that is abundantly clear, yes.
I, I think perhaps we should slow down. Get the right documentation that Angela did not bring with her, and perhaps have town council comment on this language. And if we're going to sort of be asked to work around, um, you know, as a last-minute application to, to. Essentially freeze the bylaw so that the moratorium doesn't apply, I think we have a right to do this right. And let's get this language cleared up.
Well, if Peter could bring up the plan, then you can see the tract of land that we're, um, proposing to subdivide.
Yeah, the, the, the plan was submitted.
It's, uh.
Some inaccurate information on the assessors' parcel doesn't, on, on the assessors' parcel information doesn't make the preliminary plan filing. Defective. If there is in fact inaccurate information on, on the assessors' information.
Yeah, I think that information is just confusing. I, I don't think, um, is, is this a question? I don't think it's, I don't think it's what we're talking about here.
I think that what we're talking about here is, do we have two plots on the public, public way, the way that the language Kate pointed out? States. And what does that language mean? And I agree with Kate that we need a little clarity here.
You know, otherwise, I think I have it. Okay, you got it. Or, yeah. Oh, I have it.
I, I, I got it. One minute. I got it up. I'm sorry. I was searching. Uh, excuse me, I just gotta manipulate it.
Just need to wait till your daughter's a little bit older. We can have them assistance.
Oh, my God. All right, so this is the plan right here. Union Street, this is the property, follow my arrow, uh, where the public safety, the building is being built. Um, I do remember the A and Rs that we did have to approve for the public safety building. They did have a few addresses, and so I know there was some confusion points there. Uh, and then I'll just outline the land, uh, in question with the subdivision with my cursor. Follow it over and down. This would be the roadway, Road A. The parcel line is created here. This becomes proposed lot one, where my cursor is. Hey, uh, this is the frontage that you speak of, right here, a Union Street. Where my cursor is now is lot two, and there's my cursor here, the frontage on Union Street.
Can we see the language that Kate had before again, please?
Right, but I, I also need to know what the, um. The frontage requirement is for the zoning district. Now, I don't have that information in front of me, I don't think.
It's, it's a note.
Hundred fifty feet.
There's a note on plan that shows that, right up there.
Right, so it doesn't have frontage. That lot does not have frontage on a public way, and the other one, I don't think it does either. Neither of them do.
Because.
Because the frontage that's required is, I, what did you say, Bob? A hundred and fifty feet?
It's one fifty in a dozen inch of length.
Yeah, one fifty, and so the, the.
Essentially, because we worked for an agreement with the fabric company to give us land for the safety building. The frontage has been reduced in such a fashion that you're getting an automated ability to subdivide and build contrary to a building moratorium. So that is where we are, and it, that's the situation you put us in, and I'm glad it's transparent.
I, I'm, I'm not, yeah, right. I, I'm not putting you in a, any situation other than to a- ask you to approve a subdivision plan. That legally conforms with the subdivision control law. Or. Well, I, I don't know that it doesn't say it has to have adequate frontage. That's the reason you may subdivide and build a road. So I, I am not, I propose that we get a legal opinion on this before we vote, and I propose we table it until we get them.
Peter, is, is that something we can do? We can continue this as we've continued the others, correct?
And so, yes, and so that would obviously have to be in agreement with the, the, the applicant here tonight. Please note residential subdivisions have a forty-five day, uh, time clock on it. This, uh, application obviously starts on November seventeenth. As I counted, uh, today, that clock forty-five day shock clock, quote unquote, ends on December thirty-first. And so to table this and to get legal counsel. Prior to our next meeting, which will be on January twelfth, we would just have to be continuing, uh, we need to have an agreement with the applicant. To, um, to continue this matter to January twelfth.
Sure, but we also have a right to deny it on the spot, so, right, we're not required to accept this. This is not a subdivision. This is not a subdivision that we're required to essentially take, correct?
You have the right to deny it, but you have to in writing um, explain why you're denying it. And then the applicant has the ability to revise the plan so that it conforms with the subdivision control law. So a denial does not like wipe this plan off the face of the earth and then the building moratorium applies to this parcel. We have the right to, an, an opportunity to correct this plan.
We, could we go back and look at the text? Let's just see, cause I, I think there's a genuine, um, there may be a genuine um, question that we have if this actually is a genuine subdivision. Obviously, I mean, most of us on the group are not lawyers and so we're a little bit out of our wheelhouse here, but we're trying to understand the language and it, it does.
So this is the language Kate gave me. Correct me if I'm wrong. This is the language from Master General law, chapter 41, 81L. And then below here is the definition from our bylaws of what a subdivision is. Oh, excuse me. I'm just gonna restart my.
Yeah, I, I think the, I think the question that Kate was bringing up was that it doesn't, it just says in, in the master under laws, it just says frontage. It doesn't say correct frontages or adequate frontage, or it just says that there, there's two lots and every lot has frontage. Um, I, so I don't know. I don't know. What does, what does that frontage mean? Does it mean the required frontage? It doesn't say that. Is, does it say that somewhere else in the paragraph?
But the planning board could not legally allow the applicant to subdivide this parcel into two lots because then neither of those lots would have adequate frontage. So without some sort of zoning relief, the board would not be able to allow the subdivision of this tract of land into two lots. So I, I think it's, it's implied if not um, that, that it means adequate frontage. I don't want to say obvious, but.
Well. So to me, this seems like something that our legal council should take a peek at.
Sure, I would appreciate that.
And which requires you in this situation to, to authorize a continuance. Because we can't just do it without your permission. So are, are you, are you in that place Angela? Are you willing to?
I, I don't know if I have authorization um, for a continuance or if it's even quite um, necessary, like I said, even if you were to deny this plan, it, it's not a complete denial. It's, it's basically you give us feedback on why you're not approving the plan and then we still have seven months to correct it. So um, like I, I just, I, I guess I'm not really understanding what the issues are. It's um.
I think the issue is we're just looking for, we need to, I think the board is asking to get some clarification from town council.
Sure.
And I think these issues kind of arouse rape that um, I wasn't able to take these to town council. So I think if we were just able to continue this and we can put this on our next agenda. Obviously we've, can you continue the three out of four out past the next meeting? And so all we, we could put this on our next agenda on January 12th. So it would be.
I think the question we're asking uh, town council, which I think is the proper course of action in light of the fact that the safe, public safety building is part of this dynamic um, is to interpret this section to, to really explain to us whether this language prevents the subdivision. So. And I understand Angela, your position, which is that it does not. Um, but I, I think in light of the fact that you filed this so last minute um, literally to avoid the building moratorium rules. Um, I, I think it'd be in your interest and the public's interest to allow us some time to get this right. Okay, and, and I'll, I'll share that if there is no continuance, I would be comfortable taking a stab at a denial and the applicant can correct.
Correct what?
Well, I mean, presumably we would, I would, I would argue that we can take this language as is and indicate that the subdivision is not appropriate. And you can then go to town council with a different kind of discussion and reapply or whatever it is you need to do.
I think that there are, there are obvious, I mean, there are obvious mechanisms within the law, within Mass General law that allows exactly for this kind of circumstance. I'm not really sure I like what's coming up, so I'm gonna, I, I have these mechanisms to deal with it. And that's not, uh, that's not, you know, Angela didn't create those laws, right? They're, they're just, they're just there and they're tools that can be used. So I don't think there's any kind of um, you know, in, in my mind, there's no kind of animosity here. It's just that it is unclear to me that the language is, is as Kate has highlighted, it does seem unclear to me. And I would like to know the answer before we, before we take any steps, whether it's a denial or an approval. Um, but to, to understand what it actually means. And so I would like that information. And so I would respectfully request that you accept a continuance to the first meeting in January so that we can get that information that we need and decide what to, you know, what we can do, what we can do about it. I mean, Peter is, is, you're saying that even if we, no matter if we accept or deny this subdivision, it has been submitted and thus moves forward in the same way. Is that, is that right?
Correct.
Right.
And then so um, and the big piece is a definitive subdivision has to be filed within seven months of anything. And so that's where uh, kind of a rubble meets the road per se. But I understand Kate's question and I've been trying to work on it. Uh, it took me a day or two to wrap my head around it. And now I think I, you know, I understand what the question is in, in full. Um, and I'm happy to take that account back and, and try to get the, the, the right answer for everybody involved, for both parties and, and use it as a learning experience.
Exactly. I think that's all this is about, you know, and then we, we move forward according to the laws and bylaws.
I, I mean, that's simply my point. I'm not a lawyer, so I see chapters, I read, I did my best. And that's all this is about. And I, I would not feel comfortable voting for it based on that language. I did ask that we get feedback, so and unfortunately we couldn't get it for the meeting.
I have to say, I very much appreciate that Kate sent this to Peter ahead of time. I think that, that as a, by doing that, we attempted Angela to um, we, you know, I would say that Kate doing that essentially on behalf of the planning board is very, very helpful. Um, but we don't have the right answer. And I can tell you, I'm a, I'm an attorney, but I, I tend to stand on a very gray area where I'm not going to sit here and start uh, opining legally as to what I believe, nor am I going to start pulling case law um, on something that involves um, a complex statutory scheme and, and frankly involves an area of public interest when we have a um, the safety building involved, et cetera. So.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt you. The public safety building isn't involved. This is a separate parcel of land. So.
But the parcel was created because the town negotiated with the Faford companies, right? So the parcel essentially exists in its current size because we have a very important project um, which is the safety building.
But I don't, I, I don't get how that's affecting that, that's the, okay, okay.
I, I, I would prefer legal counsel other than someone on the planning board to opine is what I'm trying to say.
I'm sure there's a simple definition for frontage and it's, you'll find that these lots abut a public way, but they don't have frontage on a public way. But we can discuss it on the 12th. That's fine. I'll grant.
Is, is, is that, is that something that you're comfortable granting? We would.
Yes, I'll grant the continuance. Yeah.
Okay. Peter, can you um?
Yeah, I'll reach out to Angel tomorrow and we'll work and obviously an email just would be obviously appreciated that.
And then obviously get it on.
Make a motion that, should I make the motion to continue or?
If, if we're ready, um.
I believe we are.
I think, I think we're ready. Okay. Go ahead, Kate.
I make a motion for the village at Clocktown preliminary subdivision 58 exchange Ashland continued to the January 12th. Was that the correct?
That's correct, yeah, January 12th.
I'll second that.
All right, and we'll call vote.
Anna Tasmitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. So we will continue that to January 12th. We will get some answers. And then we will understand um, what, what the next steps are.
Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, approval not required. Chestnut Street and Queen Isabella Way. We have our old friends, the McDowell's.
Good evening. How are you?
I'm good. Thanks. Hey, Peter, do you want to just uh, explain where we are here with the NA?
So Roy and Todd, who we know very well uh, from our last uh, hundred Chestnut Street project. Um, they uh, within that project, we talked about, they talked about developing a dog. And so with that said, uh, prior to uh, the McDowell's moving through a closing uh, for the property. They are looking to uh, work with the current owner um, to create a parcel of land to build and maintain the dog park. And so I'm just gonna bring up the screen uh, and share my screen. Um, and so as we all know, this is the detention basin that lies across the street from Queen Isabella Way. Uh, and it lies across the street, excuse me, of the um, project that was just permitted at a hundred uh, and 130 Chestnut Street to get this thing developed. Um, principal Lord Dowell. Um, and the lot that is being looking to be created is lot um, H, uh, two, HA. And it has a lot area of 41,000 square feet, uh, point nine six acres. And this is the lot that Dog Park is proposed to be developed for. Uh, if I missed anything uh, from the standpoint of the applicant, uh, please feel free and jump in. Uh, and uh, and then open up any questions or concerns.
Peter, I think you covered it well.
So in this case, can we just um, just um, know that the property gets divided, the dog part becomes under the control of who? And the rest of it is under the control of who?
The dog park would come under the ownership of Basedon Ashland LLC, the same owner as where the apartments will be.
Okay. And the remainder stays within the ownership of the condo association?
I think eventually that will get transferred over to them is my belief. Currently it's under the Chestnut, I think it's Chestnut Realty.
Correct. It's owned by Chestnut Realty, which is the Faford company.
Okay. And, and this is the piece of property that contains the retention basin or that we had been talking about to capture the, the stormwater runoff. Is that?
Yep. And if anybody visits the site, this is the basin that's currently being mucked out um, and redeveloped.
I know people who live there actually, and they were very, they were very disappointed by the cleaning because it has scared away the wildlife for a while. I'm, I told them I'm sure it will come back.
Well, unfortunately, I think the chain link fence is gonna have a negative effect on the wildlife as well.
Just birds.
Birds.
Oh, okay.
So um, okay. So does anyone have any other questions about this document? It's outlining where the dog park is. Um, was there any particular reason of its, the shape that was decided on this?
Well, the shape, the shape fit the contours and wove between the trees where we didn't have to take any trees down. So it seemed to make sense to have that shape as you see it.
And I'm sorry, Peter, you're, I think your cursor is right over where it says area.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep. The area is 41,912 square feet, which is approximately nine point six, excuse me, points nine six acres.
So basically almost one acre. Okay. Questions, anyone? All right, comments? If not, I will make a motion to approve, prove the approval not required for Chestnut Street and Queen Isabella Way.
Second.
Right, all call vote.
Anna Tasmitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Tricia Kendall. So that passes. Thank you. Thank you for waiting so long.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too. All right. So now we're down to our basic things. Why don't we cover these meeting minutes really quick and then we'll do, talk about when anything anyone else needs before we adjourn for the year. That sounds quite nice, actually. I did have just a few little edits.
Do you want me to bring it up? I don't, I, I don't have a paper copy of one of these ones.
Whatever's easiest for you. I have the line numbers.
Sorry. Five two, twenty seven. Okay. Microphone, do you?
All right, I am at line 63. It says they agreed to add language to the sustainability section, item E, and the condition to specify that all buildings would be constructed with HVAC and domestic hot water, which gosh, I hope so. Um, but so I think it would be, should be, all buildings would be constructed with all electric? HVAC and domestic hot water?
Okay.
The next one is way down in line 141. At the end of the line, yep, 141. At the end of the line, it says bus stop area. So we're just missing an S for bus stop. Line 140, yep, there you go. And then I think this is lastly, yeah, lastly, when we're talking about the brewery. Um, there, there's three occasions where we talked about Mr. Perez, but there isn't a Mr. Perez. It's Mr. Um, Butanas. It's Isabel, Isabel Perez and David Butenas. So. And I believe that someone, well, at least at one point they say he, so I don't think they meant Isabel. I think they meant David, but I'm not sure about that.
So there's the one.
Yep. And the other one is on line 173. Yes. And the last one is on once, at the end of 176. And that is all I have. Anyone else?
No, I had no, no changes to the minutes.
All right. Then if everyone is ready, no one's reading, I will make a motion to accept the meeting minutes from October 27th uh, as amended.
I'll second it.
Right, and we'll call vote.
Anna Tasmitsky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Tricia Kendall. All right. So that's all of our official duties for this evening. Does anyone have anything in that list that they feel needs to be addressed?
Um, I have something. I think it would go under like administrative matters. Um, I just want to remind people that I think it's by January 20th, we all have to file like um, sorry, I'm exhausted in like the words. Uh, you're, you're public, so you run for office and you have to public finance documents, I believe. Um, and the only reason I'm bringing it up because I believe even.
Um, and the only reason I'm bringing it up, because I believe even if you did not run for office in that year, you have to file it once a year. So I just want people to check it out, make sure you don't miss it, or don't get stressed on a deadline, give enough notice.
Thank you for the reminder. I know I owe something to the town clerk in Ashland. Um, and I have to be, I'm gonna have to come in tomorrow to get sworn in for the um, the comprehensive plan, um, committee. So, thank you, Kate, for reminding me. I'm, I'm gonna look into what else I owe the clerk, including that document.
I need you to sign, uh, two A and Os.
Okay. So I will see you tomorrow, Peter.
Perfect.
Can I wait, sign till the twenty-first? Cause I'm gonna go in the twenty-first.
Yeah, it's, uh, the twenty-first. Yeah, I'll be in the office. I'll be, I should be there.
Um, any, any other topics in there that someone? Anything that we need to, to go, to say right now?
I don't think anything urgent, nope.
I will be sending out a, um, you know, working with Peter to send out a doodle poll to the planning board and the design review committee, looking for an opportunity to set that retreat, that joint board retreat, that's, that's the only we won't have anything else at that except the working between the two committees. Um, but I'll send that out, and we'll see if we can find a common time that works for most people.
Uh, I just wanna make a note, thank you, Tricia, that I'm gonna be out, uh, on vacation the week between Christmas and if you need me. Uh, you can't reach me.
Good, a good for you, yeah.
So, alright.
Alright. There's nothing else, then. I wish everyone a happy holiday, and I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at ten fifty-nine PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
And a roll call vote.
Anna Tesmitzky, aye.
Marcelo, aye.
Catherine Jersey, aye.
Kevin McLean, aye.
And Tricia Kendall, aye. Have a good holiday, everybody.
Thanks, everybody.
And a happy new year.